Yes. Now, I'll open it up for call to audience. Seeing as there is none, we will move on to the regular agenda. Adoption of the revised council rules and procedures, item 4A.
Okay, I apologize in advance. This is going to be a very dry subject, but I will do my best to make it interesting. So currently, the Ferndale City Council has a document called the Council Rules of Procedure. And the premise of this document is that it is the rules by which you've collectively agreed to govern yourself, particularly as it relates to public meetings, but also covering some other topics. What we're going to look at today is how those guidelines are adopted. Some of them are just self-defined, perfectly reasonable for us to make changes to them. Others are recommended, more reflective of Robert's Rules of Order. And then others are compliance-based, so required, such as through our city charter or through state statute like the Open Meetings Act. Where things are self-defined or recommended, there's a lot more flexibility. Obviously, anything that's statutory, we have to comply with. This is just a summary of the different sections of the actual Rules of Procedure document. There is, with this agenda item, a redline version that shows what changes are proposed between the last version and this. And really, the nature of those changes is all about the recommended section, so what is contained within Robert's Rules of Order. So we'll start with just quickly defining what is a regular versus a special meeting. This city has some unique rules that are charter-defined regarding its meeting dates. For example, you are set to meet the second and fourth Monday of every month, but in December, to meet the two-meeting-per-month requirement, you meet at 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM on the third Monday. That third Monday date is one of those things that's discretionary, for example, but the requirement to have at least two meetings per month is charter-based. Special meetings are defined largely by state statute, so the 18-hour minimum notice for posting, the limited nature of the subjects, the fact that the agenda cannot be changed to the dais, those are unique to state statutes. What is informal is that the city has gotten into the practice of having those special meetings in the one hour before a regular meeting, or when that's not possible, to at least have it on a Monday, an off-Monday of council. For the actual agenda-setting process, these are actually all the different sections that our agenda can have. You'll note the ones with stars next to them are only included if there's actually something relevant to that topic in a particular day. For example, tonight is the first time we'll have a discussion item on the agenda, so that'll be a new practice for us. But these agenda areas are all consistent with Robert's Rules and really best-practice standards in terms of how the flow of business is ordered. So the two biggest components of your agenda are going to be your consent agenda and your regular agenda. And I just kind of summarized briefly here what's appropriate to include on a consent agenda versus what's not really appropriate to include on a consent agenda. The content that's not appropriate for a consent agenda is probably more relevant. The general business of the city can always be consent-agenda-based, but if you're making major changes, large awards, significant on-budget expenses, anything that's unplanned, then it's really best practice to make sure that that's a regular agenda item. And then, obviously, you use some discretion for anything that's highly relevant to the public or controversial in nature. It makes sense to include on regular agenda. For the preparation process, the process is generally managed administratively, so through myself and the city clerk and department heads, agenda items are created. We have an approval process internally where things get reviewed by the clerk, by myself, by communications, by legal, by finance, depending on what the relevant subjects are. We do have an internal rule that all items need to be created by the noon on Monday preceding the meeting. So this includes both internal and external additions to the meeting workflow. And this is simply because of how long it takes us to get through those approval processes and to make sure everything is formatted correctly. We are recommending, it has not historically been a part of the guidelines, but we are recommending a change to the guidelines to say that all submissions, so resolutions, proclamations, follow a standard template and formatting moving forward. This is what a regular meeting agenda-setting calendar looks like. You can see it's pretty much something happening for the entire week before the meeting occurs. Different milestones and triggers. The agenda items are created by noon on the next day. Department heads need to have all of their materials in. So that initial review is just us determining, is this appropriate for consent versus regular? Is this something that we're prepared to discuss now or not prepared? By Tuesday, all the support material should be in. That's when we review all the support materials. People start, people internally start doing their communications and reviews. And then by Wednesday, it should be prepared to go out to the council review committee, who does the same thing, reviews and determines if they want things moved off of consent, on the regular, or if any particular items need more information. The goal is to have our agenda packets finalized by end of day on Thursday. In practice, that has been a hit-or-miss goal. We do have a statutory requirement, sorry, I believe a charter requirement, to post online at least 72 hours ahead of the meeting. For special meetings, our best-practice standard would be to try to follow the same seven-day pattern that we do for a regular meeting, but recognizing that some business may be urgent. There's a more minimal goal described in the council guidelines of four days, and again, with 72 hours' notice. But of course, the statutory requirement is that the final agenda must be posted and meeting notice 18 hours in advance. For outside requests, what has been consistent with the city's past practice and what's reflected in the guidelines are some parameters around the types of outside requests we will consider, and then what channels individuals can make through either a council member, the mayor, two council members, the mayor, or the city manager to be added to the agenda. There are parameters on what's suitable, so the types of organizations that we will allow to do proclamations for or give presentations. Most notably, this is generally geared around school groups or other local nonprofits. You should typically avoid anything that has political or directly religious implications as that's not appropriate for government action. The actual meeting procedures, this is the meat and potatoes of actually operating your day-to-day public meetings. The automatic presiding officer over any meeting is the mayor. In the mayor's absence, that turns to the mayor pro tem. There is the option, if this group would like to, to elect a presiding officer. Otherwise, you would just, in the event that both the mayor and the mayor pro tem were absent, one, I believe you probably wouldn't have a meeting, but two, technically, you meet quorum and could, so you'd have to name a presiding officer from the peers at that meeting. For meeting procedures, the city does have a self-defined limit to close all meetings by midnight. Again, this is one of those discretionary things. If you wanted it to be sooner or later or not at all, that's something you could accommodate, but right now, it stays midnight. If that were to occur and all regular business was not heard by that point, you'd need to, as an action of closing the meeting, just set a future meeting date. There are also time limits imposed regarding presentations and how long the call to council section should be. For the citizen participation section of our guidelines, the primary form of public comment is the call to action. So this is where we allow comment on any item, on or off the agenda. The limitation is three minutes. Time cannot be ceded. Those are all very standard, best-practice rules that most communities have adopted by this point. What is something that I want to hit on here is, it is technically the role of the chair to call any speakers to order if they exceed the time limit, but any member could also request through the chair that an enforcement to comply or a call to order is made. So if any member ever feels like time has been ceded and things are getting a little out of hand with a public comment, they can make that request through the chair, and action would have to be acknowledged at that point. The group also has the opportunity, there's a self-imposed limit of 30 minutes total for the first public comment period. If they wanted to extend that in that time, any member of the group could make a request to continue to extend the time limit. Otherwise, continuation public hearings section, continuation call to action section is automatically added before the call to council section of the agenda. This doesn't count as two separate public comment periods, so a speaker can't speak during the first and then speak again during the second, it's a continuation period. The second type of public participation is the public hearing. This is only hosted when necessary, limited to a single action or topic, and then very similar rules to what we just discussed. Three minutes per person, you can't see time. Chair or any member is going to be responsible for calling a person to order if they exceed the limits, and there would be a continuation period if we went past 30 minutes. What constitutes disorderly conduct? Exceeding the time limit or failing to yield the floor if you are a speaker, using profane or slanderous language, threatening hate speech, or certainly hateful actions. That can all be called to order, again, by any member, but it is the role of the chair, if that escalates, to engage the police department for removal, if necessary. And that would go from being a call to order to being disorderly conduct and a request, really, a call for service to police. We do have some specialized rules for individuals who are not present, so we allow individuals who are not, who are present to speak on behalf of others, but that does not mean that you get to duplicate your time. We also allow that individuals can request that their comments be shared digitally via the city clerk. Now, that's not a guarantee or even a promise that those comments get read out loud, but they do become a part of the record, and the clerk will share with council if they're submitted within that timeframe. And then any member of the council could, if they wish to, make those comments read at the meeting during the call to audience period. During the regular business section, there's a three-step process to every type of action. So for regular business, the initiation of discussion should always start with the chair introducing the item, the chair then calling on any relevant staff to present. Technically, the member should make a motion and a second before any discussion starts. So this is a little, this is a Robert's Rules of Order structure, a little different from the standard process the city is using now. You guys tend to make your motions at the end of the discussion. More typically, you would make them before discussion even starts. So for example, the chair would call to question, call, introduce the item of adopting the revised council rules of procedure. They would call on me, I'd make the presentation. At the end, the chair would say, "Do I have a motion?" A member would make a motion, another would make a second. The chair would restate the motion to say, "It has been properly moved and seconded, that we adopt the revised council rules of procedure. The motion is on the floor." At that point, the city would then follow its standard process for members to speak. All Robert's Rules says about members speaking is that it should be structured, there should be equal opportunity for everyone to speak, and the way that the city is doing it now is fairly common, which is to go in order of each member, give them an opportunity to speak in turn. The city has its own rules on limiting that initial comment period to five minutes per person. I don't know that we've ever formally tracked that time or that you have an interest in doing so, but certainly, if someone did, under your guys' guidelines, another member could call them to order to ask that the next speaker, the next member be allowed to speak. The additional comment period would be permissible after everyone's had at least one turn to speak, or if during that period, anyone wants to amend the motion, that's certainly permissible as well. At the end of all the back and forth, everyone having the chance to comment, the chair would then call for a vote, either on the original motion or on the amended motion. So discussion ends, the chair would state something along the lines of, you know, "It remains properly moved and seconded, that we adopt the revised council rules of procedure," or they might state, "It's been properly moved and seconded, that we amend and adopt the council rules of procedures or adopt as amended the council rules of procedure." At that point, either a voice or a roll-call vote can be had. So this is another thing, it's perfectly fine to do it differently, but the popular convention is to do most votes by voice. So really, what does a voice vote look like? This is the most common style. The chair will call for the votes by asking all in favor. So again, restated motion, properly moved and seconded, adoption of the revised council rules of procedure, all those in favor, everyone states "aye," all opposed, anyone who is opposed states "nay." The chair then declares the vote, would say the ayes have it, and at that point, we either move on, or if someone has a concern about whether it really was an "aye" or "aye" vote, they can call for verification by roll-call. Roll-call, I think, is something you're all more familiar with, that is more statutorily defined, so there are certain things that you need to do a roll-call vote for, and there are things that are recommended. So statutorily, it would be like entering a closed session for recommended. Large expenditures are usually what most communities identify as something they might want a roll-call vote for, or like the adoption of the budget itself, things that have a large financial impact. So that's the general flow of business for a regular business item. Public hearing is similar but slightly different, because for the public hearing, which we've already started to do a little bit, you have to open and close the public hearing. So the proper protocol for public hearings is, again, for the chair to introduce the item, the chair to call on relevant staff to present any information if it's applicable, then a member would make a motion to open the public hearing at a specific time. They'd need a second. At that point, the chair would restate that the motion and call, call the motion to open the public hearing. Once the vote is passed to open the public hearing, then public comment opens up. After public comment is closed, a member has to make a motion to close the public hearing again at a specific time. Same rules for the voice vote, you would call the motion, make the voice vote, and then deem the public hearing closed. Then you'd go on to any relevant action item again, following that same regular business process. And like, I get it, his eyes are glazing over, there's a lot of technical steps. Not every community follows Robert's Rules exactly, but this is technically what is the structure for that. So if we want to do the recommended practice, we can. If we want to make our slightly modified version, we can. That's perfectly acceptable. Some key rules for the discussion section, regardless of whether it's a regular business item or public hearing. So again, discussion always opens with defining an assigned order for speakers. Everyone should have that opportunity to speak. Debate should be limited to the merits of the motion. That goes without saying, try not to make it personal. And then, to the extent feasible, questions or requests for additional information should always be made in advance of a meeting, but there is a protocol that you can use to request information, that's called a point of information. So instead of a point of order, which is about how the meeting is proceeding, a point of information would be to request additional information that is not otherwise available in the packets or through the presentation. That does technically require a second. So this is another example, very common across communities, that points of information are not really used. Most of the time, members just make a request for additional information, and it's granted. If you did want to follow that structure, this is how you would do so. A member would make a request for a point of information, they'd state what they were requesting, and another member would second them. It doesn't require a vote, just requires a first and a second to be put on the record as a point of information. During the discussion period, it's perfectly acceptable to propose amendments. If you do and you're proposing the amendments, I would strongly encourage to make it clear, like, "I am making a motion to amend," and then state your amended language, so that it's clear where the discussion is proceeding from. I've definitely seen us get confused at the dais, making the amendment after discussion has ended. It's a little bit cleaner, that way, if we know exactly where the discussion is picking up from, either with the amended or with the original motion. And then, again, the discussion is closed by the chair recalling the motion, but if, for any reason, the chair is not calling a motion to close or allowing discussion to go too long, it can also be closed by a vote. So there's probably 20 different types of motions you could make during a meeting, but I called out the most common. So again, the motion to amend, that's just stating the amended language that you like to see, and then immediately after a first and a second opens the floor for discussion on that amended motion. That amended motion then becomes what is the action. There's motion to postpone. So motion to postpone and motion to table are often confused. Motion to postpone is typically to a date certain. You can also motion to postpone indefinitely, which is to end the debate without any action. If you want to continue the debate, but just at a future time, and you specifically know that, the next meeting or some other meeting, you would make a motion to postpone to the July 28th meeting. If you want to motion and kill the bill or kill whatever's on the floor, you're going to motion to postpone indefinitely. The other option is motion to table. So this is just stating, we want to circle back, we may circle back, we're not committed to terminating all discussions on this topic, but we're putting it on the table. There's no specific action to revisit the item. Now, to revisit the item, it would need to be taken off the table as a future action at some other event. It cannot be taken off the table at that same meeting, technically. And then, point of information, we just discussed, that's to request additional material. And then, motion to end debate. So this is just a motion to recall the current question. Again, if debate is lingering on, everyone's had an opportunity to present, and the chair is not, has not yet decided to end the discussion, but a member wishes to see it ended, they could make a motion to call the question. And again, that follows the same rules, you'd need a first and a second, and at that point, you'd need a vote whether you were going to call the question. Calling the question does vote on the actual motion, so that's something to not be confused, it's just a different way of kind of forcing the motion to be voted on. We covered the difference between voice vote and roll-call. Again, I'll just say, this is, you're all's discretion. Voice vote is the far more common way of handling everyday business. If you wish to proceed with roll-call votes for everything, there's nothing inherently incorrect about that, it's just overly formal for the processes we have in place. And technically, either way, the vote should be called by the chair, not necessarily a staff member, because you are all governing yourselves during the course of this meeting. Staff are just little actors in your, you know, your world. Last but not least, closed session. Again, this is largely driven by statutory rules, what's contained within state law. This is one area where you do require a roll-call vote, and it's unique in the sense that minutes are taken, but they are separate and they are not a part of the public record. They cannot engage in any consensus building or formal action inside a closed session. You do need to leave closed session to make any formal action. You can deliberate, you can debate, you can form your own personal opinions, but it's not to go in and make decisions and, you know, circumvent the public approval process. That's it. Made it. Any questions?
Through the chair, I have questions. First of all, what prompted this?
So what prompted this is just my review of your guys' procedures in public meetings and then talking with Dean. He's been educating himself on Robert's Rules. I'm very familiar with them. It was probably time to brush off your guys' guidelines, they were last updated in 2017. There are things that need to change within there, just compared to what you're doing today versus what you said you were going to do in the guidelines. So the changes reflect, again, best-practice alignment with Robert's Rules of Order, as well as a little bit of a reflection of what you've developed as your own standards now.
The attachment that has the red information, is the red information new or just rephrased?
It could be one or the other. It could be rephrased, like, if you're reading it and it seems like something's cut off there, it's probably rephrased. If it's totally new sentences or paragraphs, then it would be new.
So the reason I ask that is because, could you go back to the flow, regular business flow chart? There you go. I am concerned about the five-minute limit for initial comment, and then three-minute additional comments. Not that I, not that I want to see us just drag things out, but I feel like we've had the best possible discussions at various points because we have gone back and forth. And I'm trying, I guess I'm trying to understand in here where the back and forth would be, because it looks like members speak in turn, so we have our five minutes during the initial round. Would we then be limited to three minutes for a back and forth?
Technically, under your guys' current guidelines, yes, you have limitations in place. This is one of those areas, though, it's entirely up your discretion. And I'll say, you as this council body can create rules that are different from what the council body previously adopted. It's about how you guys want to manage public meetings amongst yourself. If you want to eliminate those limit periods or not follow the recommendation to at least let everyone speak once before engaging an additional comment, that's completely your discretion. I would just say, the Robert's Rules recommendation is at least let everyone speak once before additional dialogue occurs.
And I'm completely fine with that, it's just, the reason I asked about the red information within the packet is because that's where all of that is. Every last bit of that discussion period is in red, except for some line items down at the very bottom that are crossed out, that says, "Making a motion shall be limited to three minutes." And then it does say, I guess, "Discussion debate shall be limited to five minutes, and explanation of vote shall be limited to two." So I'm guessing we cross that out and-
Yes, so what that section originally stated is that you guys would follow Robert's Rules of Order, and it just stated that, and these are the time limits for the types of talking. Three minutes for making a motion, five minutes for discussion debate, three minutes for explanation of vote. So that's where the three and five responses came from.
And two more questions, and I promise, that should be it. Where do we ask questions in here?
You can ask questions during the discussion period. So that's what I was saying. That is where, if you want it to be more formal, that would technically be a call for information, point of information. So if during the course of discussion, and again, this is the most formal way to do it, it doesn't have to be the way you do it. If you are during the course of discussion, have identified additional information that is necessary to make a determination, you know, for example, you would state, "Point of information." Someone else would make a second, and you would say, you know, "For the provision of tax rolls from, you know, delinquent tax rolls from fiscal year-end '25 for reference," if they weren't attached and you needed them to make a decision. Alternatively, what you've informally just been doing is speaking directly to staff during meetings and saying, you know, "Can we get more information, or do you have more information about this?" In the context of a public meeting, you are the body, and staff are resources, but we are not participants in, formal participants in the debate or discussion that occurs. Most communities kind of take the informal approach and say, "But, you know, we want feedback actively from our city manager, from our relevant department heads, things of that." I'm just putting out there, technically, you said you wanted your guidelines to reflect Robert's Rules of Order, so that's what this does. If that's not something you want to see, we can add language in there that talks about requests for information more specifically.
And at what point or given time would we make those revisions?
I would request your feedback now. If they're simple, we could make them through a motion, or what I can do is take your feedback and then just put this on consent agenda for the next meeting. We don't have to take action now. We could certainly, you know, submit changes that people want to see, either through a conversation now or through later comments, and I can add to the next agenda. Again, there's no particular rush in this, other than just wanting to make you guys aware of what your own guidelines say and give you the opportunity to create a set of rules that you all actually feel comfortable with, so we don't have two different sets of information out there. One is the guidelines that technically are adopted, and one is how we actually do things. If we could marry those two things and set clear expectations, I think that would, one, help me in terms of knowing what to expect in structuring things, two, help us with future council member onboarding, if that occurs, and really, three, help you guys all to kind of hold each other accountable to what those guidelines are. to kind of hold each other accountable to what those guidelines are.
So, these are a lot of changes. So I think that it's something that I, for one, am not prepared to make these changes like off the fly right now. I don't know if anyone else is.
Through the chair, I'm fine with doing everything that we've been doing as we have done. You know? But if, if, if-
If I could at least get you to change how you vote, that's probably the only thing you do that's truly outside of the norm. And again, it doesn't matter if it's roll call or voice, but it really should be that the chair, not a staff member, like calling the actions.
So I'm calling the names then?
Yes, so, well, in a true roll call vote, it would be acceptable for the clerk to call the names. You're calling the motion before, before it actually gets voted on, and calling for the vote, and then you're calling the outcome, at the very least. If you change to a voice vote, then yes, you'd call the vote as well.
So because it's late, I'm going to ask for, I, I'm somebody that kind of needs to hear it, so give me an example, how, let's, let's just go through. Let's do some role play.
Okay, yeah, no problem. All right, so, for example, I don't get that. The current, the current motion, so, for example, I will call the question. Calling the question means I'm bringing the original motion back.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm calling the question of the original motion, which is to adopt the revised council rules of procedure. Do I have a motion? Do, you know, you know, first, second, yes.
So moved.
Now I, now if it's a voice vote, I'm going to say, all in favor. Everyone says aye, and then I'll say, all opposed. Anyone that wants to says nay. At that point, assuming I had all five ayes, I would say, the ayes have it, the motion carries. If it fails, I would say, the nays have it, the motion fails, move on to the next agenda item. If I call a voice vote, and it's three to two, and it's, you can't just tell from the voice, you as a chair or any member could say that they, they are requesting a roll call vote, motion for a roll call vote. And then at that point, you as a chair would say, roll call vote, and the clerk could, either the chair or the clerk, could read the names, at the end of which, the chair would call it either for or against. Does that make sense?
It does. So if by chance tonight, we need a roll call vote with the-
I'm not going to make you do this tonight.
Thank you.
Like, well, well, I'll ease you into, this is training session number one.
All right.
And then we'll have time digest the changes. We, we'll make tweaks to whatever you guys feel is necessary, based on how you like to do things. Again, unless it's like a statutory requirement, I'm not going to tell you, no, we can't do that. You guys can vote at any time to suspend the rules of order and have-
Chaos.
Pure chaos, decide things, you know, however you want to. But this is, this is, I would say, what this presentation and what the changes are designed to reflect is best practice standard.
This is what I spent, so, this is very familiar to me, because this is, this is my weekly life.
Yeah.
Right, like, so this is, this type of procedural functioning is my constant life. And so, this makes a lot of sense to me. You know, one thing that's really interesting about, especially larger cities, is the larger councils will have a parliamentarian, a full-time parliamentarian, and her job, Dr. Powers, her job is to literally interrupt the council president and say, no, I'm sorry, Madam President, that's out of order. Nope, that's not the correct motion. And it takes some getting used to, for everybody, that it's like, oh, okay. And they all know, they defer to Dr. Powers, because they're, they've adopted Roberts Rules. And the reason for these rules, and the reason I support moving toward a slightly more formal and, and motion-based practice, is because it just, it documents everything, and it ensures that these things are all very clear, because that's why these things exist, right? It makes sure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and that every action is documented in clear action points and, and stuff. But it doesn't mean that, like, you know, I think something like, the motion, you know, a first, a second, then we're in debate, I think after that point, we're going to kind of do what we do, right? I think that's totally fine, I don't see anything wrong with that. It's just like, once it's time to like, call the question or move to the next actions, having those clear points really delineates for folks, like, what happened, when did it happen, and all that kind of stuff. It's certainly been interesting for me, serving on this council, how informal processes are. It's, it's not what I'm accustomed to. So I, I like to find, I want to find, I want us to find like a nice, happy medium between our slightly more free-for-all processes right now, to a little bit more motion practice, just to keep things a little bit more ordered. But not such that we're like, you know, this isn't the European Parliament, like, we don't need to get, you know what I mean? Like, it's, we can find our own local variation of what it means to do it. Like, so, I, you know, I know, so the Detroit Council frequently, when they'll do a voice vote, they usually don't call for the ayes and the nays, they'll usually say, all in favor, or the council president will simply say, you know, are there any objections to the adoption of the, of the motion? And then council members will call out their objections. It'll say, objection, Councilmember Benson, objection, Councilmember Johnson, and then the clerk will note those, and then at the end, the clerk will still call the result, you know, will still say it is. So it's just sort of like, a slightly different spin on how the voice vote thing works, but in that way, if people want it clear, like, how they voted, because that's why they adopted that practice, is because council members were like, well, I want it clear when I'm, especially when I'm opposing something, and I just, the, the ayes and the nays didn't give people that opportunity to be like, clearly on the record of like, I voted no. So that was sort of why they end up kind of reaching consensus, this current council around that practice, you know? That was one way they, it's one way of doing it, like I said, a local practice can be created.
Yeah, I think in that regard, if the council wasn't meddable to adopting voice vote, but some member wanted to make it very clear that their objection was noted, they could also just call for a roll call. The, the minutes will still reflect who voted, that the total number, ayes and nays, but, yeah, they, if you specifically want to note your name was opposed, anyone can call for a roll call vote. There's only five people, it's not going to take us very long.
I like that we do roll call, I mean, frankly, I like that we do roll call on things. I know it's overly formal, but I think it's kind of nice, I think it means everybody kind of gets to state, you know, what they do.
And it's documented in the minutes as our names and how we voted.
Yeah.
Well, and, and the audience, you know, because sometimes it's not even pictured what we're on screen, no one can tell, you know, did, did you make the yes, or did you make the yes, or, you know?
Right.
Again, this is, this is about how you guys choose to govern yourselves. So you tell me, you know, what you want to see, and that's what we'll write.
Through the chair, if I may, if you do look at our City Council Rules of Procedures on our website, and just read through it, there are many things that we realize we don't do here, and so it's kind of like, do we change the process to match our procedure? Do we change the procedure to match that process or a different process altogether? There are things in there like the Roberts Rules of Order, it lists a specific addition that's now outdated, there's a newer addition to that, so we, you know, want to just change the language for things like that as well. But, but generally, just to get us updated, because we haven't been updated in quite some time, I think.
100%, yeah, a little, little behind the curve.
Well, we are about, you know, almost about to have a meeting, so how are we going to go about this tonight? Is the question.
Like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm not expecting anyone to make any immediate changes tonight. If, if you feel inspired by this educational opportunity to, you know, start making motions differently, by all means, certainly do that, or, or if you have questions as we're presenting things, and we want to kind of run through in real time, I don't think anyone's going to give us grief for, for trying to figure out the best way to, to structure our meetings. But, yeah, if, if we are not ready, and it doesn't sound like we're ready to adopt the actual guidelines, that's perfectly fine. Like I said, I got a little feedback now, but if you have anything else, just shoot me a message, I'm happy to make those updates.
Through the chair, I would propose that we motion to table, since I'm looking at it. I think there are some things that I am just completely uncomfortable with, the, the limitation on time that council members can speak, 100% opposed, I had no idea that that was currently in our rules and procedures.
I think it's five minutes initial comment, I want to be clear about that part.
Five minutes initial con, comment, and then three minutes follow-up. I just don't even see how it's enforceable. Would we each have a little stop-start that we hit when we, when we speak?
Is that your whole motion?
So technically, you made motion to table, someone would have to second it.
Second.
There you go. And now, you could have discussion.
It's going to take us a minute to get you-
I know, I know, it's okay.
Yeah, as, as a point of discussion, I just, I feel like that limitation, I like it in theory, I'm, I'm going to put that out there, I like it in theory, I don't want us to get into the practice of just pontificating at the dais, and eating up space, and eating up time, and continuing on indefinitely, so that all of our meetings run until 11 o'clock or midnight. But our, some of our best council meetings have been those council meetings, where we have gone back and forth, had open dialogue. In the interest of transparency and doing our job for the public, I cannot see us limiting that. And just the, the overall enforceability of it, I think is impossible, unless you do set us up with like a little chess timer, where I smack it when I start, smack it when I stop, and continue on.
I, I don't disagree with you, those limits were in the original guidelines, technically you're supposed to be operating under that structure now. So if you don't want specific time limits assigned to any of your comment periods, that's easy enough to remove. I do want to clarify, if you're making a motion to table, and that motion passes, I cannot bring this item back to you. You guys would have to take it off the table in the future. Until that time, the guidelines that were adopted in 2017 are still what exist.
So if we motion to table, do we have to have a, does it go through the agenda committee to get it back on the agenda?
No, someone would have to make a motion to bring it back in the future.
And then it would get put back on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
So the alternative is, you motion to postpone to some specific date, if you, if you know you want to discuss this again.
So can I retract my motion and make a motion to postpone until maybe next month's first meeting?
First meeting in August, of course.
Yes, you can withdraw a motion.
Yes.
I would like to withdraw my motion to table, and revise it to be a motion to postpone to the first meeting in August.
Is there support from your second?
Support.
And then, so that was the second motion, was to also postpone the first meeting, so that is now what is for vote, unless there's further discussion?
Through the chair, but technically, Raylan should have been saying everything that you're saying, not you as a city manager. I understand, I'm just, I'm just trying to get clarity here.
Yes, technically, as the second, yes, Raylan would have called that, we're all, we're all learning together. So at this point, the motion is to postpone action to the first meeting in August, which is what date, Dean?
Ooh, let's see, August 11th.
So we're postponing to August 11th. Now, Raylan, do you want to call a roll call or voice vote? What are you feeling?
I think at this, let's just try it, a voice vote.
So receive the motion?
Receive the motion to table our-
Postpone.
To postpone, excuse me, our Roberts Rules of Order procedure, to the August 11th city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, this is unanimous.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. I was reading, I'm sorry.
There you go.
All right.
Okay, well, that is, that is all we've got then.
Then, there's no other business? I, well, probably going to make another motion to adjourn the meeting. Okay, I'm, I make the motion?
You're asking for a motion.
I'm asking for a motion, to adjourn the meeting at 6:47 PM.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting's adjourned at 6:47. This is going to take a minute, I'm just saying. This is going to take a minute.
Okay.
If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead.
Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Mikulski.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
And now, approval of the agenda. Who will make a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to remove the board appointments from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
So item 7B, removed to the, to the regular agenda. All right.
Support.
So we're making a motion to amend the agenda to remove item 7B and, and place it on the regular agenda. Who will, do we need to make an?
No, the motion's made, so you guys can call.
All right, okay.
Supported.
Supported. And may all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B will be placed on the regular agenda as item 8C. We have a few presentations tonight. Our first presentation, presentation 4A, is the introduction of city planner Melissa Calnese.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, as the mayor said, this is the introduction of Melissa. Melissa comes to us from a Combs Township, and she's been here about a month now. She's taking on a lot of things Kyle was doing, if you recall, and she's assimilating into the organization very well. We're very happy to have her. I'll have her come up here and say a couple things.
Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Calnese. I just want to say, you know, it's nice to meet you all. Nice to be appearing before the public as well to introduce myself to you two. I'm just very excited to be part of Team Ferndale, and I'm looking forward to working with you all. Let me know if you need anything. I'm always happy to help. So thank you.
Welcome aboard, Melissa.
Welcome aboard, Melissa.
Item 4B, Citizens Police Advisory and Review Board Annual Report.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Greg Brown. I am the CPARP Chair. Here with me today from the CPARP, I have Director Omowale, Director Whitman, and Director Couples. Dr. Gruber does not appear to be here today, but we make up the Citizens Advisory and Review Board. This is just a description of all of the officers, our titles, and then when our turn ends. So the history behind the Citizens Police and Review Board. In 2023, as you guys are mostly aware, the City of Ferndale, City Council have approved the creation of the Citizens Police and Advisory Review Board. Applications for citizens interested volunteering for the board were accepted in March, and then in June of 2023, the positions were announced, and we began meeting in July of 2023. The purpose, this is taken directly from our policy and procedures of operations. The purpose of the CPARP is to foster open communication between police leadership and the community, provide greater transparency for police conduct, complaints, and use of force reports, and the process that follows, and to improve and strengthen police-community relations through enhanced transparency, review of police conduct, and opportunity for community input on police policies. In addition to the, in addition, the CPARP is required to provide an annual report to the city manager concerning the number of inquiries and PCCs, which is outlined in the parentheses, reported and concluded through the PCC process, and to assess through the thoroughness, accountability, effectiveness, and assessability and responsiveness of the department, and to review all use of force, aka R2R, provided to the board by the Chief of Police. I'll give you guys just a second, if you guys will look over the different definitions. So I've mentioned R2R, which is response to resistance. It'll tell you what the definitions that is, as well as PCC, which is the police conduct complaints. So I'll give you guys just a second to read the definitions, and I'll go on to the next page. Awesome. The key definitions are appeals, PCCs. If a complaint does not, a complainant does not agree with the outcome of the PCC investigation, they have the right to appeal with the Office of the City Manager. If someone wishes to appeal it, they might have 21 calendar days of the date of the notification letter that is sent to them by the Chief's office. The appeal must be made in writing, by mail, by fax, or email. The city manager shall refer the matter within five calendar days to the CPARP, which is done through Mr. Jacy. An appeal before the board will be scheduled and conducted within 30 calendar days from when the appeal is filed. Before you, you have the 2023, 2024, and 2025 data from the case reviews. It is important to remember that in 2023, we started in July for those. And so it's a partial term. The red is the PCC appeals. So you'll see for the first two years, we did not really get many appeals, as people were not familiar with the process and really didn't know on the aspect of what we did. The PCCs are outlined in blue. And as you can see, with the, with the great work that the Police Department is doing and the support of the board, those numbers are actually decreasing. And then the R2R, which is the response to resistance, are in the green. So the outcomes for what the board chooses to go with at our meeting, we have five different motions that we carry. It could be either review and support, reviewed with follow-up questions, hold and request for more information, support with recommendation, or reviewed and create a resolution, resolution to the Police Chief and the City Manager for review. This chart right here will give you some data from the R2Rs from the 2023, 2024, and 2025 fiscal year, which shows you what the board has chosen to do in such motions. As you can see, review and support, and review and support with follow-up questions are the two that have been chosen for the duration of the term. As the CPARP, we often review some of the policies that are put into place with the Chief of Police, remaining to some of the complaints, some of the R2R practices. Some of the policies that we have reviewed were body-warrant cameras, the statistics for jaywalking, the TASER policy, the pursuit review, mental health, and FLOC. Accomplishments for the 2025 year, we created the chief report, the chief's report keeps, the chief keeps the board appraised the major happenings within the department and upcoming events to discuss department activities and community concerns. This year, we held our first two PCC appeals for, obviously, members of the community who felt that they wanted to appeal the decision that was made by the Chief Office. We established and refined processes for the hearings and the PCC appeals. The mayor and the city manager actually came to one of those appeals. The pet chip reader, we have member Whitman, who has found a source to assist us with finding pet chip readers for the community. That will be coming out at a later time. However, she was able to solidify income for us to be able to set those up with the station. The chief is going to get with the department's heads, and that information should be forthcoming. Attend for community presence at CPARP's meetings. We've had a lot more people there than normal. Our CPARP members have also went out to community events. And then something that's very exciting is the NACOL membership obtained through, for the board members through the grants. And then we've also worked with the PD and citizens for a fair Ferndale regarding innovations and community policing. Some of the future goals and objectives, ongoing in-depth review of bylaws and procedures, making improvements, and seeing necessary to create efficiency and create a path that will assist the future board when our terms do conclude. Community outreach, working together with the Ferndale Police to develop at least one new program, work with the city on media outreach, and possibly utilize the chip reader for the animals found in the city. And then, last, work with the city to update CPARP on the website and to assure connections to the CPARP are easy for the community to find. That is the end of the presentation. I would just like to point out for the board members, in our, in our description of what we did, it says that the board had to meet every quarter, once every quarter. The board has been meeting with the chief and Mr. Jacy every month. So we have found that to be very beneficial for us. I would be remiss if I did not thank Mr. Jacy and chief for their open approach to having the board and coming into our meetings and sitting down with us. At this time, all of the information that we are getting, we find to be correct and very useful to try to create positive change within the City of Ferndale. That being said, are there any questions from the council? Awesome.
Is the NACOL grant, is that the chip, what is that exactly?
The NACOL grant is for the community, for the neighborhoods and the communities that have volunteer police advisory councils. That's something that is completely different. It'll give us opportunities to work with other people who have CPARPs or whatever they may call it. They have different conferences to enlighten us about what's going on in and how to assist, and for how us to be better leaders as it pertains to CPARP.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending one of your meetings, and I thought you all were very professional, very thorough. I was, it was my first time attending it, and I thought you all did a wonderful job. So thank you for your service, all of you.
Appreciate it.
Next up, item 4C under Presentations, is the presentation of Main Street America's Accreditation for Downtown Ferndale.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today is a special day. It is the birthday of the DDA, actually. In 1981, on July 14th, the DDA was established in Ferndale through ordinance in state legislature and the State Act in Michigan. We were first accredited by Main Street nationally in 2001. We were first accredited by Main Street nationally in 2001. And this is an outpost from the National Trust. I think Annika will speak a little bit more about what it means to be an accredited DDA. But we were accredited in 2001 for the first time, and then in 2010, we're actually recognized nationally with the Great American Main Street Award, which is an honor that less than 10 communities in Michigan have, and I think less than 200 nationally have. So, it's a really big deal to be an accredited Main Street community. We are very proud of the work that we do, the effort that goes into it as far as setting strategic initiatives, aligning with different stakeholders, establishing a budget, and really showing the worth of the hard work that people do because they care about downtown Ferndale. So, I'll turn it over to Annika.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Well, I love doing these presentations, and, and we like to do them in front of Council because it gives us a time to really kind of talk super positively about the program. And then, thank you for creating not only a DDA, but a Main Street program in the City of Ferndale. Main Street is an economic development tool that is recognized across our country. There's over 2,000 communities using the Main Street tool, and it's based on four points: design, historic preservation, economic vitality, and promotions. And it works really well. I have a couple, some flyers to leave here. This is our 25th anniversary this year of being a coordinating program in Oakland County, which is pretty exciting. This did start out, the Main Street program did start out in the state of Michigan, but then they kind of stopped for a while, and it was taken on by Oakland County. They decided to have their own coordinating program. We do now have 29 communities, and of course, Michigan Main Street did come back a couple of years after. But we decided that it was so important to do the work within our own county, and we could see how, not we, because I wasn't a part of it then, but the county saw the impact that it was providing, so they started, they continued on. So, 25 years later, we're going strong with 29 communities, and we actually have two more interested in joining us. So, here's some stats and information that can be given to all of you. Before I do that, I think there was one pretty big point here. The economic impact between 2001 and 2024 in Oakland County for Main Street communities, and that's really select-level Main Streets, because up until recently, not all of our Main Street programs actually gave us all their stats. So, this was varying between eight and 13 communities over the last, basically, 25 years, is 1.2 billion in new public and private investment. I think that's pretty huge when you look at a program with an impact on so few communities at that time. So, there's some pretty interesting stats that you can all look at and see why this program is so vital to our downtowns. And I don't want to take much of your time, I just wanted to go into a little bit of, of Main Street. Main Street America refers to both a physical space, typically the, the primary commercial district in a town in or city that is dedicated to not only revitalizing downtowns, but also maintaining those downtowns and keeping up, because we can't stop doing what we did in the revitalization stage, or we kind of die, we slowly die and turn back to what we used to be. So, it, it's, it's continuing to do all those wonderful things that the Main Street and DDA's do together. The organization, Main Street America, uses that a Main Street approach to help communities preserve and enhance their historic downtowns. And I told you about those four points. If you ever forget it, you just think about me and think about dope, and you've got it. Being an accredited community with Main Street America signifies that a local revitalization program has met rigorous performance standards and demonstrated a strong commitment to historic preservation, economic development, community and community engagement. It indicates that the community is part of a nationwide movement dedicated to strengthening older and historic downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts. Real quick, the six key aspects of being an accredited Main Street community show that they've met high standards, including broad-based community support, inclusive leadership, diversified funding, strategy-driven programming, and, and demonstrated impact. They have a proven track record of achieving, of achieving positive outcomes in alignment with the Main Street approach. Everything we do needs to look at the Main Street approach. You know, we talk to communities about not having too many special events, because, yes, special events are economic development, but economic development, it means more than special events, and if you're doing too many special events, you don't have time to actually do the hard economic development work. Economic impact from that work that you do. When you look at these stats, you'll see the, the amazing economic development that truly comes from that grassroots opportunity in our downtowns, and all the jobs created, as well as housing within our downtowns that make our communities so memorable and strong. The community engagement is huge. We can't do this work without bringing the community in to make sure that not only are they, they're volunteering to help, because we know that this work can't be done with just a director. It takes a, a, just a lot of volunteers that are committed to our own community. I, I happen to have been a volunteer many years in this organization as a resident here. And of course, historic preservation, and then you get from it national recognition and ongoing support and help. And we love working with Ferndale. We see all the great things you're doing. We love, as staff, to be able to provide opportunities, like we were able to get a $5 million upper grant that went out to several communities, and Ferndale was one of those communities that got it. So, whenever we can, we want to make sure that we're bringing money and opportunities, as well as education, to our Main Street communities. So, just wanted to provide the, the plaque to show the accreditation, all the hard work that's done, and I was hoping that you wouldn't mind if we got a picture with you, because this wouldn't happen without your support.
Let's do it.
Annika, on behalf of the DDA, thank you again to Main Street Oakland County for the support. Our good standing within the Main Street community enables us to have access to grants. We've received almost $300,000 through the county for wayfinding and sidewalk repairs, as well as $17,000 in operating funds for training and other technical expenses. We've also had two businesses in the last year who will be receiving Michigan State University Federal Credit Union Business Support Grant. So, it is phenomenal. Thank you all for the work you do to support us.
That's good news. All right. So, now we're at the portion of the agenda where it's called to audience. At this time, you can come up to the podium to speak. You would have three minutes to state your concerns, or questions, or anything on or off the agenda. Please state your name and your address. And I just wanted to say that I encourage anyone who's up for Boards and Commissions to also introduce yourselves tonight during call to audience.
Okay. Chris Johnston. I'm from Woodward Avenue Brewers and representing DIY Street Fair tonight. The last meeting I was at, Councilman Mikowski asked the Director of the Dream Cruise if there was, if they paid for police presence there. And the answer was no, because the police would already be there, because they were monitoring traffic on Woodward, which I think is kind of interesting. And then later, we discussed Ferndale Market Days, and it was told that there would be little, no impact on the budget. And later, I read online that we should have transparency and stick to the facts, so that's what I'm doing here. These are the estimated costs for DIY this year. The total's about $29,000, police, fire, TPW. This is Funky Ferndale, $14,000. Market Days estimated zero, that's a Ferndale event, which is saying that Dream Cruise is going to pay, zero. Why it's zero, I'm not sure. This is an event that happened last year, Hispanic Festival, in the same location as this. This was one day, this is two days. They were charged, or they were estimated to be charged $6,899. As far as I can read in the budget, the Dream Cruise operated a net loss of $1,400 last year, and is expected at 26K this year, under budget, that is. I don't know if that's right or wrong, that's how I read it. So, those are the numbers. Should all events pay for city services? I, I don't know. You know, I've been in business for 25 years in Ferndale, and every once in a Monday has the City come by and said, hey, I know you guys were really busy last weekend. We'd like some money to help pay for police and fire, for bringing all those people into Ferndale. That's never happened. And it feels to me like this is some sort of penalty for having an event, and it's, these are very big costs. And, and this year, you know, we decided not to have a liquor portion of it, and I thought these costs were going to come down, but they didn't. And I don't understand why our event is going to be charged, could be charged $29,000 when Funky Ferndale is 14. It was supposed to be less than this, and I don't understand why it is less, police and fire, when this is zero. Check my notes. These expenses are a huge event, putting on a successful event. And what defines a successful event? Obviously, an event has to pay for itself to happen again, but to me, success is bringing lots of people to Ferndale, having an event that Ferndale is proud of and can get behind. And that's what we try to do every year, and it's getting harder and harder to do that. And I really wish that there was an even playing field between Ferndale events and other events. It doesn't seem fair to me. Like I said, should they be paying for police and fires? Should they be paying for city services? I really don't know. If it was up to me, I'd say no, but I don't make the rules. The other reason I'm here today is because I had requested that we could have music until 10 o'clock on Sunday. And when you all discussed the new policies, Councilman Johnson, I believe, asked, are these just recommendations, are they rules? And the answer was, no, they're just recommendations. And so, when is the time that someone could ask for a change in that? Well, that would be when the Special Event Committee met to discuss the event before it was brought to Council. Sounded good. Did it happen? No. I put on the event that I would like to have music until 10. It was not discussed at the event, Special Events Meeting from our event, and I was told that it was a rule and that I would have to come before you. So, here I am. It's not a rule. Music has to day in Ferndale, as far as noise ordinances go, and at 10 p.m. So, I'm asking to stick by the rules and be able to have music until 10. The reason why is because, and I can either discuss this now or later, when, I don't know if it makes sense to you, but that's going to be my request. So, maybe I would request that approval of DIY is suspended till I can discuss, or I can plead my case in front of you, because I don't think now is the time.
All right. And we will hold off on that, because actually, there is, tonight, I expect for a Council member to be added to the Events Committee, where we can kind of get ahold of, of some of the requests and make sure everyone's being treated fairly and heard accordingly. And I didn't realize this, but, I don't know, was the timer going?
Yes.
It was? Okay. All right. All right. So, we will, we'll, we'll have that conversation, and we'll come back to that, Chris.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I was so busy writing, apologize, listening to what you were saying. All right. Next up.
Hi. I'm Mindy Couples. I live on East Marshall Street in Ferndale. I was going to come by a couple of weeks ago and talk about this topic, but I couldn't make it, and I was glad to see there's something on the agenda tonight about it. With the construction beginning on Vester, I have to ask what the City plans on doing to help mitigate the parking stress on the businesses on that side of town, actually, on the whole east side. In the past, when we had projects, as most of you know, I spent six years on the DDA, so I was pretty involved in a lot of the projects that happened, including the Withington Lot and the DOT. In the past, when we had projects on the west side, the City Manager Office, the CED, and the DDA worked together to assist. One of the things they always did was, if there's major construction, construction workers were required to have a meeting spot someplace, someplace outside the neighborhoods, where they would meet and then bring in less traffic to the neighborhoods and take, take fewer parking spots up. I haven't, I, I don't know if that's standard, if the CED already has that in the, in the agreement with the builder or not. But I was thinking about it today, and I just wanted to mention it. The other thing we did is the DDA took the lead on Uber codes for employees at the establishments on the east side to try and free up spaces. I don't know if any of you have noticed, but if you ever come in to park before 4 o'clock, you can see all the long-term parking is taken up, and that's probably primarily because employees are taking those spots. Obviously, I don't have a problem with it. The Uber code thing actually worked really well and was less expensive than you would think. And it is, there's specifics Uber can put into it, so a person can only come from wherever their location is, say, they live in Hazel Park or Oak Park, to Ferndale, and they can use the Uber code, I believe, to go back to the spot they came from. They can't take the Uber code and use it to go to Comerica Park or to a concert someplace or anything like that. So, that was one of the things that we've used in the past that was successful and, and worked pretty well. The other thing we've done in the past was valet services, which also worked well. And as I was thinking about that today, instead of just throwing something out to you guys, because it's primarily the east side, maybe some businesses that have their own parking lots but aren't open all night, could be approached to kindly and neighborly give up some of their parking spots for valet services. For example, the new nail salon that moved into Breckenridge where Snap Fitness used to be, or even the free accounting firm that's on Woodward now, but used to be over on Hilton. They have a number of spots, not a ton of them, but they have a few. Even maybe if we could use Credit Union One's surface lot. I know it's always a problem if we go into their parking lot, but if we use their surface lot, maybe it's something that would work out.
Thank you, Mindy.
I'm not done. One, one more thing. So, I'd have to argue also, because now that we have the DOT, we could probably work with Smart Bus Systems and maybe get a driver, not seven days a week, but maybe three days a week, because it's primarily restaurants on the east side. And I thought that would be pretty valuable use, too, because we have a lot of, as you know, seniors, people with accessibility issues, whether it's short-term or permanent issues, that can't really get around on the east side, or go to the east side if there's literally no parking.
All right. Thanks. Thank you. And I just want to state again, the first one was my, my fault, but we want to limit it to three minutes, so that people in line can also get their turn to speak.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sarah Van Warmer. I am up for a board appointment for the DDA this evening. I have been a resident for 20 years. I live on Farmdale Street. I am a proud graduate of the Fern and Learn Program. I see rightly here. It was a program that really captured my interest, because I've always wanted to get involved in local government. And when I saw the information come up, I think it was on a Ferndale Facebook page, I immediately snapped and, and made sure I was going to be a part of it. During that program, which I think was just incredible, there were so many good presentations, and I, I really struggled to think where I wanted to get involved, but I knew I definitely wanted to get involved. But the DDA, part of the reason I'm interested is, I really believe it's the jewel of our community, the downtown. Living here for 20 years, I have seen a tremendous amount of change. All of it, you know, really, really good, as far as I'm concerned. And I really like what it brings to our community and to our city. As for me personally, I've been a professor of psychology at Macomb Community College for 18 years now. I served eight years on the State Board of Psychology and was chairperson in 2020. In addition to working as a professor, I was a chief negotiator for my faculty union for eight years, and I just stepped down in December, and I said, I'm going to take some time and just relax. But of course, I knew that. but of course, I knew that couldn't happen, because I got inspired by what I saw at the Fern and Learn Program. So, um, I just want to introduce myself, and I appreciate, um, your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hello? All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Kevin Roach. I'm on West Marshall Street in Ferndale. I've been here for about, uh, 12 years this December, and I'm here, uh, since I applied to be part of the Commission for Accessibility and Inclusion, or the Ferndale Accessibility and Inclusion Commission. Hope that I do well as part of the Commission, and, uh, just wanted to say hello and all that. Bye.
Good to see you, Kevin. Thank you for joining the Commission.
Hi, my name is Erin Cambron. I live on West Woodland Street, and I've lived in Ferndale for 14 years now. I am also the owner, co-owner, my husband as well, Max Cambron, of Love and Other Books just across the street over here, and, um, we've been in business for less than one year. And I'm up for appointment for the DDA. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Christopher Hall, uh, 1845 Simms Street. Had to write this down so I could have all my thoughts together. Dear City Council and Mayor ladies, okay? I am here today to express my strong opposition to the proposed vacation of the north and south alley between East Breckenridge Street and Rosewood Street. This property owner that I met at 1806 Breckenridge has owned his home for the last 15 years. He cannot be here due to his PTSD, which I'll later explain. It's concerning that only recently, in mid-June, the resident was informed that he needed to move his fence prior to this meeting for any decision was made. This situation presents an opportunity for KBJ Group, also known as Hilton Flats, which plans to build an 18 unit apartment complex in this location. While I am not against development in Ferndale, on the contrary, I support it. I firmly believe we do not need another Flats 2.0 similar to what's going on in Bermuda. Uh, this particularly move does not make sense. The land is ideally situated for the condos at Hilton and Woodward Heights. Currently, the parking in front of this land is being utilized by the Green Buddha Splatter and Mint Hair Salon for their workers and clients. This will undoubtedly cause congestion, especially down Breckenridge, and I never thought I'd be one of these people who come up to the stand to complain about Thomas the Train. As a resident of this area, I have witnessed numerous incidents, including cars speeding by, accidents involving hitting trees, residents' vehicles, and near misses with children. The public utility easement appears to benefit only regulated private entities rather than the community. I believe the council does not want a repeat of the Bermuda Flats complex situation where residents had to come forward to voice their concerns. The current resident has endured two home fires next to him, which is why the PTSD actually happened. But this aftermath, uh, taking over three years to address and now faces new construction on either side of him. While I understand the need for affordable housing, I also see neglected properties in our neighborhood, such as a burned-down house with a blown-off door and a charred vehicle sitting in the driveway, all while little is done to improve our community. I want to emphasize that there's needs to be better communication regarding developments in our neighborhood. I am not criticizing Riley or Roger by any means. They are doing a fantastic job. However, it is essential to keep residents informed about what is happening in the areas. It feels as though East Ferndale is treated unfairly, as if we're on the other side of the tracks like Kenny from South Park. Proceed as low-income and undeserving of the same attention and resources as other areas. I have lived here for five years, and I've noticed more effort being put into hanging flowerpots on trees and getting tickets than into addressing real issues in our community faces. I urge the council to reconsider the vacation of this alley and to recognize the importance of preserving the space for a benefit of the community. Thank you.
May I have the name of that resident again, please?
I will send that.
Okay, okay, all right.
Hey, Dennis Augustin, 1550 Spencer. City manager, I called you a little over a week ago, and I still not heard you back about, uh, the construction that's going on in West End. That, those holes that are there, those square holes, have been cured for over three weeks now. There's no reason why you can't fill them in, and, and let's just quit getting the head on people driving north and south there. Get them in their right lanes and that, and, uh, I mean, it's, so far, the city, both cities, Hazel Park and Ferndale, have not had any problems as far as that goes. Okay? But those, there's no, no excuse for that construction, just sitting there, and just sitting there, and just sitting there, and nothing's being done. I called you over a week ago, and I haven't heard nothing back to you. You're the liaison between the people and the city council, okay? And believe you me, after 47 years in this city, I have been used to a lot more response than I've gotten from you.
Dennis, can you just address the whole council as a whole?
Oh, I, I'm addressing the whole council, but I'm addressing her, because she hasn't done her job. She hasn't done, she hasn't done anything for you guys. And I, and I can't say that I would real, you know, maybe, maybe she has, but I can't say nothing. Why? Because she's not contacted me, and I've been used to city, uh, city managers over the years, going as far back as Jeff Solthes and before that, contacting me, you know, about any concerns that I have. And I ain't heard nothing from this, this gal here, nothing. The second thing I got is, uh, Saturday, was it Saturday or Sunday? There must have been 200 bikes on, uh, Hilton there, I mean, uh, Nine Mile, excuse me, Nine Mile. Half of them took off from the Detroit Fleet, and we couldn't get down Nine Mile. Why? Because instead of all those bikes, and I mean, they must have had 50s, maybe 50, 70 bikes out there, they were out there beyond the bike lanes, and they're, uh, and they're, uh, intruding on the traffic, you know? We couldn't get around. You know, I mean, I, I like the bike myself, don't get me wrong, but I think we need to, you know, get those people who are gonna do that, those bike, you know, bike-a-thons or whatever they're doing, to be more considerate, stay in those lanes, okay? Stay right there. They'll, they'll, they'll have more, uh, if something were to happen, somebody gets hit by a car or something like that, if they're in that lane, then it's the driver of that car. But if they're out there in, out there on, uh, Nine Mile, then, you know, they're asking for it. But anyways.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I might want to add a piece of information for the public, that cyclists have the right of way and the right to use all parts of the roadway. They are not restricted to the bike lanes. Cyclists have bike lanes for their protection, but they are also free to use the regular roadway, and they are to be treated like any other vehicle.
They should be out there on their, on their, uh, bike paths over there, because let me tell you, I am not impressed with the fact that some of those people have kids in the back of them, okay? Now that the city went and said, "Okay, they want to do Woodward Avenue," that is ridiculous too.
All right, thank you, Dennis.
We want, I want to, I don't want to be reading about, you know, someone that maybe I know got hit and killed, okay? Those bike lanes are there for the people. Get them in those bike lanes, okay? If I've got to abide by the law as a, uh, motorist, then they should abide by the law as a cyclist.
All right, thank you, Dennis. So I think that will, I'll, I'll close call to council and then make the comment. Still open for a call to audience? Okay. Closing call to audience at 7:42. And now we are moving on to our public hearing. So the public hearing is Item 6A, to consider the proposed vacation of the north-south alley between East Breckenridge Street and Rosewood Street. I'm opening the, the public hearing at 7:43 PM. May I have a motion?
I move we, uh, open for public hearing?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it everyone? Any opposed? Okay. We're opening up public hearing at 7:43.
Evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I just want to pull up a map here. As the mayor mentioned, this is a public hearing for a request to vacate an alley. The subject site is between Breckenridge, if you can see on your, between these two streets, Breckenridge and Rosewood, and the alley that's unimproved, it's not built, is on the east part of the property. We regularly get requests to vacate alleys. Uh, upstairs in the building division, there's a map of all the alleys in the city, encoded by those that are improved, those that are vacant, and it's encouraged that any of the vacant ones that will not be used for alley purposes be vacated. And we probably have dozens of these throughout the community. I can think of two or three off the top of my head. Per state law, if it is vacated, 50% of the ownership goes to one property owner, so half of it down the middle, and 50% to the other property owner. Um, there was a comment made from, um, somebody that, uh, a fence was required to be moved. The city did not require anybody to remove a fence. So I don't know if the vacant property owner went and talked to the other property owner, and they asked them to, asked them to, made them to, I'm not aware of, of that request. But that person cannot ask them to move it outside of what will be their land. So if the alley is 20 feet wide, both people would get 10 feet. One person can't take 12 feet, or 14 feet, or more feet. That person can approach the adjacent property owner and ask for the land, or pay them for the land, that would be a private agreement, but they do not have to agree to it. My understanding is the property owner of this property did approach the two adjacent property owners, so that would be the house that you can see right here, and the house you can see south, and asked for a portion of the piece of the land. My understanding is both property owners have agreed to it, but the city will not get involved in that negotiation. So this is a simple request. The city, there is no improved alley there. The city will not be installing an alley. It wouldn't serve anyone. So it's prudent to vacate these alleys, unimproved alleys, when, when the request comes before us. And then in terms of the planning side, if you remember, the city council adopted the new zoning code December 16th, and as part of that, anything that is by right, um, with some exceptions, is approved administratively. So the applicant did submit a, uh, development for this. It is a by-right use, and therefore, it's approved administratively. We've already give, given the person their planning comments related to the site design. It does meet almost all site, um, rules, including drive aisles, access points, parking, et cetera. So I just thought I would add that as perspective. You, Planning Commission will not see that proposal. City council will not see that. But the request before you is simply to vacate the alley. Uh, the city attorney has drafted the resolution for you, and I can add any other context if you'd like.
Mayor, uh, just one comment through the chair for the benefit of the council. This is consistent with the, uh, city's charter provision with respect to vacation of streets or alleys where the city, uh, council deems advisable, and that there'd be no utility or potential use that the city sees with respect to this particular alley location. The proposed, uh, resolution would reserve to the city an easement for public utilities. I'm not aware of whether there are any public utilities in that, but there would be a reservation of that easement right for any public utilities that may be located in the alley area. Should council adopt the proposed resolution, a copy of it would be recorded with the Open County Register of Deeds, as well as, uh, a copy is required to be sent to, uh, the state and, and LARA for recording as well.
Well, this is a public presentation, so I'm opening it up to the public if there's comment.
Hi, uh, Daniel Stock, you have 150 Vester. Uh, I am the developer on the land, and I have been in communication with the 1026 Breckenridge neighbor, the 1027 Rosewood neighbor, and the building owner at 956 Hilton. And I do have PAs for all of them agreeing to, about this alley vacation. And from our look of it, it just hasn't been utilized as an alley for, for like 50-plus years. I haven't been alive that long, so I could be wrong there, but from my environmental phase one, it just, there was, the, the curb cuts aren't there, the, it's just very, it's just very vacated. And I talked to the Breckenridge neighbor, Earl, like a week, week and a half ago, and he said, because I asked him specifically, because I was caught off-guard when he moved his fence, like, "Did the city tell you to do that?" Because I didn't. And with his stress disorder, he was worried that his yard was gonna be, like, cut. So he just proactively just moved his fence to see what that would look like. So I didn't, I didn't ask him. I'm not sure if the city sent him a letter. He did, when the previous developer of this site, uh, was proposing the alley vacation, uh, in 2019, he did get a letter from the city saying he needed to move the fence. So maybe that's why he just moved it proactively, so. But all, all the neighbors are in agreement of, of the vacation, and I, I do have paperwork on that. So if there's any miscommunication, happy to clear it up, so.
Still open for public comment? Then, uh, I'm closing, I think I'm closing the public hearing at 7:50, and opening it up for a council discussion. Well, first, let me do the, let me adopt, share the motion that's on the table to adopt the res-
Go ahead. No motion on the table.
I mean, to, what we're, what we will be voting on is to adopt the resolution for the proposed vacation of the north-south alley between East Breckenridge Street and Rosewood Street, east of Hilton Road, adjacent to Lutz 28 through 37. And I open it up now for council discussion. And the order in which whoever wants to speak first.
I will go first.
Okay.
So I guess my question is more for Roger and Colleen. So I know, uh, Mr. Daniel, um, is developing the parcel. Has anything been submitted for an official, like, is anything in the pipeline with the city for a development?
So they submitted administrative review, uh, and we reviewed it and gave comments back. There's some miscellaneous comments. Um, I think they've addressed most of them, but generally, it meets all the technical requirements for the code.
So the development's not hypothetical, it's, it is actually.
It is real.
Okay. Actually, that is my question.
Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Comments?
Quick question. Let's say we didn't approve the vacation. What happens? Is the development still able to be developed?
Sure, so, so the alley varies in width. Um, it is a, a small width, so I don't want to speak for the developer. Generally speaking, based on my experience, if we don't vacate it, probably could improve it as an alley and then use it that way, or would have to shrink down the development a little bit to offset that area. But it can likely still develop in some variation.
Through the chair, I guess.
Okay.
One follow-up question. Under what circumstances would anybody not vacate the alley? Is this, I'm just not understanding why this is something that's coming to council besides just, "This is what we do. This is administrative."
Why wouldn't somebody vacate the alley? Why wouldn't somebody vacate the alley?
Yeah.
Why would the council or somebody on their own?
Why would the council not vacate the alley?
I don't see a reason. I mean, it's unimproved.
Through, through this one. Through the chair, it could be used. So if it was used for vehicle delivery, if it was an improved alley, that would be a circumstance where certain parties or residents might utilize that alley. That would be a reason why council might not want to abandon that alley.
Now we're talking. So is there going to be deliveries anywhere on the back of this building or anything that could necessitate having an alley?
No, my opinion, no, because both homes, trash is from the front. And for, if you can see the building to the south, they have access from Rosewood. So they have access to their parking lot. And it's, I think, closed off or they can't cut through. So I don't see any reason why the greater public needs to use it. And it's a goal of ours to vacate alleys when they're unimproved. So on this particular case, I cannot see a reason why we wouldn't relinquish our ownership, give 50% to each side, and free ourselves from any type of responsibility or dealing with it while reserving an easement for utilities just in case in the future.
Where will trash and dumpster be located for the new development?
It's in the development. So there's actually an entrance in this area, curb cut. You probably can't see. So off of Breckenridge, there's an entrance on, right where the alley is. And then the drive aisle is like a backwards L. So it comes down, south, and then west to Hilton, just north of that building. So it's like a backwards L. So they'll get their deliveries to this through the access point.
So even if this alley is vacated, it can still be used for deliveries, et cetera? Is that what I'm hearing?
We'd have to look at it. I mean, if, if that's in an alley that the council said they don't want to vacate, it de facto kind of means you want it improved. And so if the owner came and said, "I'm going to build the alley here," I don't know how we would say, "No, don't do that."
Through, through the chair. So right now, it's not being used as anything.
Correct.
The reason we would not support vacating it is because we expect that the general public is going to need to use that outside of the people on that property. So you would need to utilize that, or a council member, Johnson, Johnson would need to utilize it. The previous plan, I've not seen the develop, the development proposed here because it's not coming to Planning Commission. But the previous one, they requested that they wanted the alley vacated so that they could use that as part of their development. They, like this developer, wanted to acquire the whole alley so that they could extend their building farther back, so they have more space of the building, and still have room in the back to be able to pull in a vehicle or something to gather trash, people to move in, their moving trucks, et cetera. So that was the plan last time. I'm assuming it's going to be something very similar this time. So the only people utilizing any of that, that space would be the property, that property. Because I'm assuming that this gentleman has an agreement with the two homeowners to acquire their half of the alley.
Correct. And it's that, it's their private agreement. So let's pretend it's 20 feet straight down. We can't do anything about it. When we vacate, when council vacates, 10 feet goes to the west property owner and 10 feet goes to the east. If the west property owner needs that property, they need to approach that property owner. The property owner can refuse. They can say, "Nope, no thank you. I want my side yard or backyard to be bigger." So that's a private matter. Generally, the fences are where the fence are. I don't know if it was a little bit in our land. If he moved it, maybe it was a little bit in that alley. But, you know, those property owners don't have any real use of it now, if the fences are there. But I think if we had the staff capacity to bring you all the alleys that are unimproved and unneeded, we would do that. We would bring you all of them. It's just not something we've done.
And in the past, sorry, continuing through the chair. In the past, we have partially vacated alleys because maybe the first three houses off of the, the, the end of the alley have garages, but then the rest of the houses don't. And so the rest of the homeowners want to be able to acquire that space, but the other, you know, the first three houses need garages. And then there's been instances where one garage halfway down the block, you know, is the only one that utilizes it. And we can't vacate it because they still utilize that alley as a public, public thoroughfare, way through.
Right of way, yeah.
Right away, thank you.
I mean, through the chair, it sounds like there's going to be a pull-through area along the back and along the side. So that's essentially an alley. So we're debating us creating an alley and keeping an alley versus him creating an alley, right?
It'll essentially be an alley, but no one will have a reason to use it. You know, I guess if Hilton was blocked and someone wants to cut through, it's not going to be blocked off. So it'll kind of, you're right, it'll be a de facto alley, but nobody would have any reason to use it other than the tenants of the...
And it would not be a public alley either.
Right. Okay.
It would be a drive. More honestly, it would just be a drive for a vehicle to pull into and pull out of.
Yeah.
Because they're not going to be able to continue down through the back of the building that's to the south.
Perfect. Through the chair, I, I wouldn't mind hearing more from you.
Okay.
Daniel, Daniel Stocke again with 150 Vester. So I believe this was, so this, this piece of land has never been built on. So since 1905, there's records of nothing ever been built off the site. Now, the rest of Hilton's been built. So if you, if you just, is this, it looks like it's touchscreen? Maybe not?
No.
No.
It says, "I'm a touchscreen."
This is Ferndale.
Well, so...
Here, it is labeled, "I'm a touchscreen."
Oh, it does?
Oh, here we go. Here's a mouse.
Someone's joking.
So if you, if you go on the rest of Hilton, you can see that all these other businesses absorbed that 10-foot alley. So it was vacated, this specific alley, but it wasn't formally vacated because no one on the site was really going to do anything. I think the previous owner, 30 years ago, used to be the same person that owned this building. So he was just using it just as potential. But 30 years ago, you know, the value on Hilton wasn't as much as it was today. So you could see how most of the fence lines kept exactly the same. There's a few instances where there, you know, might have kept a few. But for the most part, the commercial neighbor negotiated with the residential neighbor about buying his portion off him. So it just happened to be that formally, it was never brought to, to council to go through the formalized process, but it was informally vacated by the city years ago when they didn't, you know, do the curb cuts or maintain the alley, so.
Through the chair, I have a question. So, and you're saying you have an agreement with all three of them right now to buy their part of the alley?
Yeah, just the Breckenridge neighbor, he, I'm giving him, I'm only buying three feet of his five. He wanted just a little bit. But, you know, most of these people just don't want the, the more tax burden, even though it's a very minor amount. They just want to keep, you know, their property the way it is. So they've been living like it's already been vacated. This is just the formal process of it.
Through the chair, I move to approve the resolution for the proposed vacation of the north-south alley between East Breckenridge Street and Rosewood Street, east of Hilton Road, adjacent to Lutz 28 through 37.
Support. And I wonder if we want to, let's just...
No, it has to be.
I'm going to, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
I want to do a roll call.
Polika?
Yes.
Recoski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
That motion carries to adopt the resolution for the proposed vacation of the north-south alley between East Breckenridge Street and Rosewood Street, east of Hilton, adjacent to Lutz 28 through 37. So I just want to let the audience know. I know things are appearing to be a little bit choppy, but we just received some information as to how to conduct our business, our business meetings in a smooth fashion. Although it doesn't look like it right now, we're getting there. So I just wanted to let you all know that we've just learned something an hour prior, and we are processing it. So bear with us. All right, I'm moving on to the consent agenda. Item 7A, approval of the June 23, 2025 meeting minutes. 7B, adoption of the revised 2025 council, board, and commission appointments. 7C, approval to backfill the finance director position. 7D, approval to backfill finance manager position with the finance deputy director position. 7E, approval to backfill customer service representative CSR position. 7F, resolution to approve qualified license for the Ferndale Social District. 7G, approval of the special event permit for the DIY Street Fair on September 19 through the 21st, 2025. 7H, approval of the special event permit for Funky Ferndale Art Fair, September 19 through September 21st, 2025. I, approval of the Parks and Recreation sponsorship policy. J, approval of the renewal quote for the Meraki Enterprise licensing in the amount of $23,391.24. K, approval of the renewal quote for the property and liability insurance for MMRMA in the amount of $828,933. Excuse me. L, approval of a contract with Fishbeck for the Brownfield Administration Services in the amount not to exceed $25,000. M, approval of renewal payment to SimCog in the amount of $2,881. N, approval of payment to Park Inc. for day camp supplies and apparel in the amount of $2,680.40. O, approval of payment to Anthem Sports for the two soccer goals in the amount of $4,390.52. P, approval of the quote from Dell Technologies for Police Department computers in the amount of $4,298.52. Q, approval to upgrade to Microsoft 365 Government G3 licensing at the annual cost of $453.60 per user, and approve the quote from Macro Connect for migration services in the amount of $5,800. R, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the finance director and subject to review by the finance, council finance committee. All right.
Madam Mayor, we had a request from the organizer of the DIY Street Fair to pull that from the agenda and postpone it to a later date. How would we go about doing that? Is that something that we can approve this?
You could make a motion to approve all the items as identified on the consent agenda, with the exception of that particular item.
Would that include both?
I think it was seven.
No.
I, wasn't it?
7G.
7G and 7H, was it?
No, 7H is not requesting...
Okay.
Just, just DIY.
Just DIY. Okay, all right. Would you like to make that motion?
I will try my best. I motion to approve the consent agenda...
Minus?
Minus the 7G approval of the special event permit for DIY Street Fair on September 19 through 21st, 2025, and postpone that to our next meeting.
Support. Our next July meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes with the stipulation that item 7G is moved to our second meeting in July. Okay. Regular agenda. We are moving to item 8A, communications staffing level report. Who's presenting that one?
It's a team effort.
Okay.
So first, I want to say to introduce this item. I sincerely appreciate the efforts of Assistant Manager Crzan and Communications Specialist Riley Coleman. This is something that we've been working on for really the past six, seven weeks to try and figure out what makes the most sense for this organization. The recommendation that we bring in front of you today is our joint recommendation as, as a team. We put a lot of thought into how to meet council's goal of being most cost-effective while being least disruptive to the existing services that are available to the community. And I think what we've accomplished here is the ability to do that, achieve cost reduction while actually improving services by dedicating certain communications resources more to our customer service side of operations as well. So I'll let James provide the presentation. I know Riley is also available for comment, but any of the three of us are welcome to provide feedback on that process.
All right, thank you, Colleen, and good evening, everybody. Just a quick background on our communications department here in Ferndale. It first started in 2015 when we hired our first communications director. Since that time, the department has grown. It grew to a peak of three and a half FTEs and a current budget of four, over $420,000. Through the time, the department has improved internal, external communication. It's created consistency. Some of the things that the communications department focuses on, things like social media, monitoring and posting, monitoring, posting, answering questions. They manage multiple social media pages. Another thing, print publications. Not just the newsletter, but a lot of the little things that go unnoticed. Business cards, postcards, flyers, yardway stickers, designing reports, handling the city's website, making sure it's up to date. Through that, meeting with the different departments consistently to make sure that their information's up to date. Customer service, this is a big part of what they do and something that really flies under the radar, but handling the information at FerndaleMI.gov email. For information@ferndalemi.gov is a great way to get information, get your questions answered, and get it to the departments that you're looking for. But also handling, again, social media questions, and then C Click Fix, which we'll get into a bit in a little, in a few slides here. They also handle coordination of special programming, specifically Fern and Learn. You heard from somebody tonight who was a Fern and Learn attendee who got excited and ended up applying to be part of a board and commission. We've seen that in a couple other instances as well, including our own DVA Executive Director, Jenny Beaker. But they also provide other department assists, assistance, reviewing publications from departments, helping with presentations, helping communicate major updates and events from departments, construction updates from DPW, for example. And under all this, handling crisis communications, one of the most important things that the comms team does. Basically, comms is doing a ton. It's not just a communications department, but it's also a community engagement, customer service center. But, you know, over the last year or so, we've had some staff departures, and the positions have gone unfilled. Since June 2024, the department has now shrunk from that peak of three and a half FTEs down to 1.5. And we're actually soon to be down to one staffer. This reduction in staff is definitely causing issues for us to be, be able to meet our missions. Decreased ability to be proactive in comms efforts. We've certainly seen an impaired response time in C Click Fix. For example, when we first rolled out C Click Fix, it was done without having dedicated staff to it. And we were seeing an average of 8.2 days for the city to be able to acknowledge reports that came in. And actually, only 59% of reports that came in... And actually, only 59% of reports that came in did actually get acknowledged. It took 54 days on average to close requests. Once we brought in a person who was dedicated to this, we got to under a day for acknowledgement of posts and about an 80% acknowledgement rate. Days to close dropped down to 13.3. In the last year without that position, it's the days to acknowledge is creeping back up to 1.6 and we're back down to about a 56% acknowledgement rate. Also, the days to close has increased to almost 20 now. We're at 19.9. And now with there soon to be only one person, there's an increased burden on that one person. In the times of emergency, there's going to be possibilities that we're going to be relying on individuals who are not specifically communications professionals, who are going to have to be the ones to get information out to those who need it. So while the expectations of the communications department have not changed, our ability to meet them right now is compromised. Our challenge here is how can we ensure the level of service that the community relies on while being cost efficient in the process? So to do that, we took a look at what we're spending money on in the communications department. On this slide, you see a quick hit list of the four buckets that we ended up looking at. This is where all the money is being spent on. Personnel, see click fix, the newsletter, and then a small portion for all other costs. See click fix, you know, at a cost of $30,000, it'd be a nice chunk to eliminate that. But that would be a huge disruption to services, even though we're not able to fully manage it right now. We see the benefit to it. But it is an expensive tool. If we were to look at making some changes there, we're definitely going to need resources to be able to have somebody to investigate these things. Another thing we looked at was the newsletter. Eliminating, of course, is going to be the most. You know, we spend almost $65,000 a year on the newsletter. But, you know, again, it's something that a majority of the community has responded in our surveys, that this is where they get information. It would not be a great value to get rid of. We could reduce the frequency of the additions, but that's going to require the departments to provide much more generic information and the newsletter would lose its relevance. We've also looked at, and you guys have right now copies, we've gone so far as to ask for samples of what reduced quality of paper would look like. As you look in this, this is very similar to some of the cheaper publications you might receive in the mail. And typically, these things come in the mail and they've got corners ripped. The quality of the print on it is worse. It's just not something that really is desirable. And really, considering it saves us about $2,000 per edition, I'm not certain that the value's there. But that is something we can look at in the future. All the other costs in the department, this is things like the business cards that are printed for every new employee that comes in. It's department-specific training, the hosting of the website, and then annual photos for new staffs that we have for presentations to have on the website, that sort of thing. Council headshots, that sort of stuff. So really looking at these things, there's not a ton of space to cut without reducing the scope of services provided. That left us looking at staffing as the only other alternative we could look at. So we've looked at it and we are looking at a plan of restructuring. To be able to maintain services while meeting the goal to reduce costs, we're recommending this restructuring plan. What we'll do is eliminate the communications director position and divide the duties between the assistant city manager and a new communications manager position. The communication manager, our plan is to promote from within and fill that with our current communications specialist. And then the distribution of the positions, you know, the day-to-day operations, the overseeing, editing, and that sort of communication-specific work would go to the communications manager, while the budget, the overarching, training, development things, the things that you think of when you think of a department head, that would fall to the ACM. In this plan, we would also kind of shift the duties of the personnel within the department. We've, for the last little over a year, we've had a police communications liaison that has been focused specifically on police. That position will now shift to being public safety-focused, what we're calling the public information officer, who would handle the general communications duties for police, fire, and DPW. This would leave another communications specialist that would handle the general comms duties for city hall departments, boards and commissions, parks and rec, but then also specialize specifically in customer service. Kind of getting back that role of somebody overseeing see click fix, looking at different alternatives, trying to make sure we're meeting the customer service goals that we've set out. So with this, you know, we're looking for a couple things. This plan is expected to save the city's general fund over $55,000 annually. So that's more than if we eliminate see click fix. That's more than if we cut the frequency of the newsletter in half. That's more than if we got rid of all the other extra costs. So we think this is a good balance here. And then again, we can also get some future cost savings, maybe through investigating the customer request module. But what we're going to be needing, we're going to need to backfill the generalist's position and the public information officer position. So what we're looking for tonight is going to be approval of our plan, which will authorize us to move forward with the creation of the comms manager role and then backfilling those two specialist level roles. With that, I know Colleen's here for questions. I'm here, Riley's here. So happy to answer whatever you have. I know it was a lot. It started as about a four-page report that ended up becoming significantly more over the last month and a half.
So may I ask then regarding the customer service response time? I mean, I've heard about it kind of on the back end, but can you share how this is, how our previous our previous structure with the opening of, with the loss of certain positions, how that has impacted the customer service as far as at City Hall?
Well, yeah, for sure. And Riley can speak probably clearer to this than I. But having that customer service advocate really improved our ability to get to questions quickly, make sure that the see click fix, which is a very popular method by which people are reporting issues, but to make sure that the reports in there are being seen by the appropriate departments, that they're getting acknowledged, that somebody is responding to that request, even if it's not the person who's going to end up solving the issue, right? Just making sure that our residents are aware that there is somebody on the other end getting the information. And then the advocate was able to follow up with the departments to make sure it got done, which is why we saw the timed closure of reports come down significantly during that time. And it's creeping back up since that time. So having another person in a role where they can be responsible for that is going to, hopefully, the goal would be to knock down that time again.
And I would just add, I think it's more user-friendly for residents in the long run. One thing I've experienced since starting with the city is it's very decentralized how residents acquire information or learn about who to ask questions to. It's very common to receive calls in my office or hear calls being received by other staff member that are not the correct location or the correct person to be answering that call. And having a single repository, a single person who could help direct those resources, sort of our own internal operator service, really, that goes a long way, in my opinion. The first step is just making sure we have residents talking to the right person instead of being passed around.
Questions or comments from council regarding this restructuring?
Through the chair, I have one question. So you mentioned that the new communications specialist will be doing safety for DPW and fire?
Yeah.
So who has been doing that communication?
That's been falling to one single communications specialist. So aside from police, for the last however many years now, Riley has been handling comms duties for all of the other departments.
So she handles the communication for fire now?
Currently, yes. And the reason for splitting up is to open up some bandwidth so that we can have more of a customer service focus.
And you also believe they both have to be full-time? It can be two part-time positions for those roles?
Based on, and in the report, you see we have a kind of breakdown of the percentage of time. That was based off of the amount of time that Riley has put in during her time per department. So that's how we're justifying that it needs to be two full-time.
Through the chair, I have some questions. Which cities did we benchmark against?
So we really, I've looked. We are definitely unique and a leader in the way we have in the past handled communications. We see our neighbor to the north, Royal Oak, starting to build a bigger communications department than they've ever had. Really, a lot of communities only have a single person. But I also see a lot of faults in the way they communicate. And I think going from what we've had to this streamlines the process and gets us to a point where we can provide the same level of services that we were before at a better price. So it was hard to benchmark against other communities.
Through the chair, if I could share. So before we had a communications director, all of the directors would handle their own form of communications and it was a lot of different voices speaking not as one city. And so what we noticed right away was that central voice for the city. So that Parks and Recreation, DPW, Police, Fire, all of that were under one voice, one format of information. So you didn't have this combobulated communication going out from different groups and sometimes contradicting one from another.
Chair, another question, real quick. What consideration did we give to outsourced staffing?
We didn't give it a lot of consideration just because we feel that it's important for the city to have a voice that is specific to the city. Again, I like to talk about Ferndale's a leader in certain things. Municipal communications is one. And I've seen other, when I was in other communities, we've used outsourced communications. It almost always ends up being project-based and more expensive. So we didn't give it any consideration.
And I will add, I won't say we didn't give it any at all. We didn't feel it warranted deeper investigation simply because of the nature of how content and communications are crafted for the city. They are largely driven by the communications department taking a proactive approach to working with departments. Where they're not, they're immediately emergency-based. So having staff that is responsive and readily available and dedicated to that service to keep us on track for the proactive messaging and to be immediately available for the reactive or emergency-based messaging was viewed as very highly ranked in terms of our evaluation. To James's point, there was a concern that if these positions were outsourced, they would become just project-based or it would turn into department heads having, again, to provide content to an outsourced solution that would further delay the messaging and possibly result in some department heads being more responsive than others about what was included. One thing communications has done phenomenally for the city over the years is stay on top of our own department heads to get that content created.
Any questions regarding the restructuring at this point?
I think, you know, I never cease to be impressed by what Riley has been able to do, especially since Kara's departure and handling pretty much everything, all as one human being in a city that is very demanding. Our residents are communicators. And what I would like to receive from, you know, you, James, and you, Colleen, is if we do this, I want to see improvement in our responsiveness, in our consistency of messaging. And again, this is no shade to Riley whatsoever. But, you know, and that responsiveness to folks who are calling with concerns, issues, following up on those see click fix tickets. I know it's a lot, a lot comes in. But if we're going to set up this team, then I expect you and this team to sit down and really put together a workable plan so that the dollars we spend turn into responses to residents to addressing these tickets or even acknowledging these tickets and saying, we've heard you, we know this is an issue, it is in the queue. But again, we only have so much bandwidth. We can't address every see click fix ticket every week. That's unrealistic. Nobody can do that. But making that, even that part clear, like we have received your ticket, not just a little checkbox in the system that they can see, but something that literally tells them, you have been heard, we know it's an issue to be addressed, et cetera. Phones at City Hall need to be answered. If I get one more message from a resident who says they tried to call City Hall and either didn't get an answer from a number or never got a call back or whatever, I don't want to hear it anymore. I want, if we're going to do a communications team with this new vision, then I want us to be able to hit all the marks we're going to hit.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Councilman. I appreciate that. So just to give you a glimpse as to some of the ideas I have immediately on board, the first thing would be a needs assessment. I definitely want to sit down with departments one-on-one and get to the bottom of, you know, now that we have more than one staff person, what do we need to do for you right now? Regarding see click fix, I met with our code enforcement officers as well as DPW and we've identified some of the pitfalls within the system based on users and mostly based on just staff time. And I do want to make it clear that I am not throwing shade at any staff members who are in this program because they're doing a lot. But we do need someone in the backend to control some of these things. So I have a huge list of some things that I want to change in the system structurally, possibly re-categorizing, renaming certain things, getting some old, you know, profiles out of there, really just cleaning it up and kind of making it a stronger system as we move forward. And regarding phones, yes, I completely echo everything you're saying. Actually, today, I just sat down with James and Taryn and Dean and we have a map of the entire phone tree. So my first task would be, let's figure out this phone tree, let's cut some branches down, whatever we need to do. Because again, I do also hear that all the time, that some calls are not going to the right spot. So that is absolutely a priority for me, kind of starting out, so.
Thank you. Yeah, so I don't want to sound like a grumpy old man, but I just want to make sure that we're setting very clear expectations. I'm very, very on board for this reorg. I'm going to vote yes on this. It's not a concern for me. I just want to make very clear what my expectations are. My yes comes with an expectation that this is going to result in these improvements.
I think there's a lot of shared goals there.
Through the chair, are we in the phase where we can make our comments or are we still in questions?
This is either or.
I believe you're in the discussion phase, so you can make general comments, yeah?
Still getting used to this with the restructuring. Through the chair, I'd like to make some comments. And this is, this is no shade to you, Riley. I think that you have, you've had an immense workload for a long time. And over the past year, you've really stepped up. I see you improving on a daily basis. You're constantly on the forums. You're responding to people. You have become an absolute linchpin in our communication strategy. That's phenomenal. This report missed the mark for me. And the reason this report missed the mark for me is because it didn't have any real assessment of outsourcing. I specifically asked if we could explore outsourcing portions of our communications work. I see no mention of it here intentionally. There's no feasibility analysis. There's no cost comparison. There's no pros and cons. It's a significant omission when we're being asked to approve a hiring plan that permanently adds headcount. Also, I had asked about benchmarking. And if you have that information, I would expect that to be in this report. I did my own research ahead of this meeting. Hazel Park has zero full-time communications staff. I don't know how they do it. I will say they outsource to one individual. He handles all their social media. He handles a lot of their basic comms. And from what I've heard from their city manager, it is a very low-cost program because of that. Oak Park has two staff, a director and a PIO and one specialist. Berkeley has one recently hired comms director that happened during their initial headley override, which also failed because people were very upset about adding headcount during a headley override. They're looking to fill some gaps with an intern currently. Royal Oak, we know, has a director because she was our director. She moved over to Royal Oak. They got by with one specialist for a long time. And then Troy, which is much larger than Ferndale, has a director, two public safety comms supervisors and a marketing coordinator, which is essentially equivalent to like a comms specialist. We're a city of 19,000 people. I don't see justification for three full-time staff. I appreciate the breakdown. I think you did a tremendous job of doing kind of like a time study, breaking down where we're spending our time. Without those other pieces, I'm still not getting that full picture. It's also important to remember that during our first attempt at a headley override, one of the most consistent concerns we heard from the public was about communications, specifically staffing. And three full-time staff members for communications felt excessive at that time. And we're recommending that we continue that when we just passed headley override at a lower dollar amount. I mean, looking at, looking at this agenda tonight, it's clear we're in a moment of transition. We have multiple roles within our consent agenda. We've seen significant staff turnover recently. There's reason to believe that there could be more coming. In the face of all of that is now really the right time to make permanent structural decisions about communication staffing. Wouldn't it make more sense for us to wait until the dust settles? Do some of that due diligence that I asked for the first time and then make those decisions. So tonight, essentially, I'm not comfortable moving forward with the recommendation as presented. I think you have done a very good attempt at organizing this information. But what I would like to see is a realistic baseline for staffing, including historic, not peak, levels, benchmarking comparison of similarly sized cities, and an assessment of what functions could be outsourced and what the cost would look like. Until then, I would basically ask that we table this, maybe until the next meeting, if there is enough staffing and ability to make those additional revisions to what we saw tonight.
I don't think it would be feasible for us to get cost comparisons for outside consultants within the really one-week timeframe we'd have to turn this around. So if this, if it's a direction of council to postpone, we're probably looking at another four weeks to get that together. So possibly the first meeting in August or the second.
Through the chair, so if we're voting today to do all of the positions, could we table two of them and vote to? I do support Riley being communications manager. I think that is a move that I could support 100%. I'm just not sure about the other two positions being the right move at this time.
So, I mean, I think my concern on this is the plan that they've presented is still a reduction in cost. I feel like we're quibbling over something that doesn't need that much quibbling in terms of the cost to the city. Now, in terms of the positions or whether their value, fine. But my mind is on the cost. And this is a rework that gets us coverage in places we need coverage and also costs less than what we're currently doing. So, you know, that to me is compelling. I'll tell you, I won't support privatizing. It's not going to happen. I'm not going to support that. We need people who are here day-to-day, who know what's going on, know our directors. That's not going to happen with privatized communications. We can get a guy who does social media, fine. But someone who doesn't actually have the day-to-day life in the city government knows what's going on? It's not going to happen. I've never seen success with that anywhere, where you don't have people who have that connection to what happens on the daily. It's just, it doesn't work.
Through the chair, what do you think about the DDA communication that is privatized through an outside independent contractor?
Well, I don't have a lot of thought about it because I don't really see much of their communication. So it's privatized to a private contractor and I don't see it. So I wouldn't call that super successful. So, you know, I will certainly never support privatizing our communications function. I want to be very clear about that. I just don't see that that's going to work for us.
Through the chair, I'm not comfortable voting on part of it. The way that they've presented it is certain positions have certain responsibilities. And I don't think it would be fair to Riley or anyone that if we say, okay, we're going to support that position, but all of the work under it, we're not going to support at this time. But that work ends up supporting the work that she does. So then she's still going to be forced to do all of that work. So I'd feel much better just tabling it and having a conversation over the next two weeks to talk about what is the next step forward.
And through the chair, just to be clear, Riley, I think you're phenomenal and you'd make an amazing communications manager. Just saying. I just had things that were part of a punch list that I am wildly disappointed that I'm not seeing tonight.
We would just need an action from council. If it's your intent to postpone to a date certain, what that date is? It sounds like there's clear direction on the additional follow-up that's needed. That's the intent.
I do have a comment. I just wanted to state that I think that before we outsource, I think it's really important to utilize the talent that we have here in our city and to be able to upgrade and promote our staff, to uplift them and promotions and things within the talent pool that we have here. I think that's very important. With that being said, I don't see any reason as to why. Another thing, I appreciate all the work that went into coming up with this plan. I know it wasn't easy and a lot, I can see the time that was put into it. Per council's discretion, I would support a revision. I'd like to know, maybe at some point, Mayor Potemekolski, you can share some of the things that you don't see in there that's of concern to you. But I don't see why postponing this for the second, first or second meeting in August would hurt anything. And we'll have a clear vision as to where we want to move forward. But I appreciate all the work and I, again, I support working in-house, for sure.
I do just want to note, it's probably not a long-term harm, but one of the important goals that I've heard from council tonight is the responsiveness of staff. We have a lot of vacancies in the finance department. That's leading to issues. We have vacancies in what was historically our comms department that are leading to issues with our ability to answer phones, emails and see, click, fixes. That will persist until we make a change.
Possibly moving up the review for, I don't know, what are we thinking? Our next, our second meeting is in July. Is that enough time to?
If we need to get outsourced, yeah, if we need to get outsourced numbers.
You need it the four weeks, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
I think August 11th is the earliest.
Okay, okay.
Through the chair, I hate to throw another layer onto this, but I also think that it's important that we're not comparing apples and oranges. I don't know what the communications responsibilities for other communities are. You know, I don't know if other communities all have newsletters that come out. I don't know if they're updating their websites all the time. I don't know if they're responsible for a see, click, fix type of thing. So I hate to compare, you know, oh, this community has three people and they're able to do, you know, they're twice as big as Ferndale. No offense, but we're a very over-demanding community. We demand a lot from, from all of us, you know? And everybody wants it now, you know? One person could live on Facebook.
Through the chair, that's the beauty of benchmarking. Let's pull some of that information and it doesn't have to just, I didn't have time to pull additional information and job duties and things like that. I just pulled numbers because it was an hour before this meeting. Had to pull the numbers, didn't see it in anything. Went back through my email, didn't see it there. So I got what I got. I'm hoping that we can have a little bit more context.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think it would be helpful for staff to understand two communities that you all view as doing communications well. Because it is a very common problem that I've heard across the municipal spectrum that residents are dissatisfied with the level of communication received from their municipal governments. So if there are communities that you think are the gold standard and that is our intent to be a high-performing communications team, what does that look like?
I am happy to share so much information since I get information from virtually every city around this region.
Someone going to make a motion to table this?
A postpone?
Or postpone. Till the August 11th meeting?
For the August 11th meeting?
Is that enough time?
Yes, if it's not, we'll communicate out that we have to delay.
I motion to postpone the communications staffing level report that was presented by the city manager, assistant city manager, until the August 11th city council meeting.
Support.
I would like a...
Roll call?
Roll call for this one, please.
Polica?
Yes.
Mikolski?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
That motion carries. We are moving on to our next agenda item. 8B, approval of the contract modification, number one, final payment to DMC Consultants, Inc. for Martin Road Park improvements.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I don't have a lot of presentation to give you. Just rehashing some information that is included in the packet. This council ask is part of the Martin Road revitalization project, specifically the extra charges that we incurred in part, as part of that project due to the poor subgrade quality of the project area. So underneath the area of the concrete pad, which is now the basketball court and the pickleball courts. If you'll remember, that was an outdated hockey rink that had experienced significant flooding. It was probably the worst flooded area in the park. And it's become that over the past few years. So that, it is the opinion of the engineers that that degraded the quality of the subgrade to the point that it required additional work beyond what was originally anticipated. Overall, the contract, I'm sorry, the change orders that came in for that project ended up in a total of $28,586 over the original contract. We want to make sure that we understand that that is, while that is more than what was originally approved by council, that is still well below the total allocated project budget for the Martin Road revitalization project overall. So we're really just coming to ask if we can make sure to pay DMC consultants for their, the work that they've done.
All right, this seems pretty straightforward. But I will open it up to council for comment, questions.
Could you, sorry, Emmanuel, could you add a little bit more to? You said that even with this increase, we're still under the total allocated budget?
Yes, that's correct. So the total...
Oh, I, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
So the total contract that was approved for DMC consultants was originally 500,000, I'm sorry, 579,000. And the total project that was allocated for the entire project, which would have included some work that was done like by DPW and other vendors, was 761,000. And of that, we've, to date, allocated about 649,000. So including this 28,000 ask, we're still, like I said, well below that total project budget.
Got it. So we're approving a change order, but we are, just for the public to be very clear about, we are still under budget on this project. This increase does not put us over budget on the project. Okay, understood.
Any other questions, comments? That motion?
And we approve the contract modification, number one, in the amount of $40,406.35 and final payment in the amount of $60,822.13 to DMC Consultants, Inc., reflecting a net increase of $28,586.06 over the original contracted amount to address subsurface drainage issues at Martin Road Park.
Support.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Johnson?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Mikolski?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes. That motion carries. And now we're moving on to the item pulled from the consent agenda item. It's the approval of the boards and commissions, item 8C. And I am going to open it up to Councilmember Kelly for comments.
Hi, yeah, I've been working with the DDA very closely for the last year and a half. Been to a couple of different conventions and trainings and have gotten to know the downtown businesses very closely and working to develop Jenny and have a strong board, a full board. And the reason I pulled this from the consent agenda is because I believe it's important that we have a public and intentional conversation about the DDA board composition, specifically how these appointments impact representation from within the Tiff district. The DDA plays a vital role in shaping our downtown. And with recent changes, allowing residents to serve, we need to ensure we maintain balance. So while I'll support resident involvement, especially as we recently added two for the first time, we have one resident at large and we have one resident in the Tiff district, which meets that requirement to have the one resident in the Tiff district. But we also must protect the business voice that this board was originally designed to represent. So it's not about individual qualifications. All three applicants bring value. And I want to acknowledge the question that I have is regarding Sarah Van Wurman's appointment as she is a resident and she doesn't have a business interest. Now, I'm not questioning your qualifications. I think you're great. I think you bring a ton of value. I was really impressed by reading your application. And I think we have a lot of other boards that are more resident-focused. That would be a great fit, in my opinion. I also want to acknowledge we have one resident on the board currently who's Tiff, as I said, one that's outside. We have three business members who are in our Tiff district. So we have five members now. If we add two members, Erin and Derek, who I do support... If we add two members, Erin and Derek, who I do support, they are both residents as well as business owners, so it also brings that perspective. One of them has a business outside the Tiff, the other one has a business in the Tiff, which would bring out of our nine board members, four businesses in the Tiff district. And I strongly believe that we need another member who is a business in the Tiff district to maintain that balance. So I spoke with the board today. I sent an email to our board and I attached all your applications. And they were in agreement that while Sarah is qualified and brings a lot of value, that they too want to have another business on the board at this time. So for me personally, I will be supporting Derek and Erin tonight for the appointment.
So this is an opportunity for me to kind of share. One, the expectations. As mayor and as being elected to mayor, one of my duties is to be able to appoint individuals to the boards and commissions. And I think that with the DDA having had some issues prior, I decided myself to reach out to council chairs, excuse me, board chairs and to council liaisons and even to department heads to just get some suggestions as to what they would like to see in a board member and the composition that would best enhance what the initiatives that particular board wants to accomplish. And to be perfectly clear, that with me being mayor, the ultimate decision is my decision to appoint people to these boards and commissions. And any information that I receive is of suggestion because I like to, once I get the suggestions and what I get the information from the individuals who either support or are against certain appointees, then I interview those individuals myself to determine whether or not they would be a good fit for the board. Over the last year and a half, as being mayor, has been a new role for me and a learning, learning curve. It's far different from being a council. And hats off to those who have held the seat before me because it is very difficult and time consuming, but I wouldn't change it for the world and I'm very appreciative of it. So I will also state that it has been some of the boards and commissions that I've had to appoint to over the last year and a half, I would say, based on the changes that I've made and the people that I've selected have been my, per my, my decision, my choice. I made some changes that typically would not have been utilized or acknowledged for the planning commission. I purposely, based on advice received and support, appointed someone that maybe didn't have planning commission, but I knew would reflect and represent a portion of the city that I heard tonight feels underrepresented, that being the east side. I had to actually appoint someone to the Ferndale Accessibility Advisory and Inclusion Commission with stipulation that that person would focus on the initiatives. I had to, actually, there were, there were members removed or not reappointed from, for the DDA in the past to actually make sure that these, the business conducted could move, go on, move, smoke, go, I can't talk, could proceed in a fashion so that the work could be conducted efficiently with the DDA. I had individuals reach out, I'm sorry this is going over, but I want to get this all out. I had individuals reach out regarding their interest in CPARB. And it was confirmed tonight that CPARB one has, is just now really getting the appeals coming to the board. And I didn't want to disrupt that makeup while I felt like they were just now getting in the motion. So I was actually looking to perhaps re, you know, maybe reappoint individuals maybe next year for CPAR, but there's definitely interest in that board as well. So just, I'm saying all this to be said that when new leadership is in place, sometimes different approaches come to play. And I have found that with the boards and commissions, the people that I've appointed, I find that these boards are moving and performing smoothly. And I would like, well, would appreciate council support in what I was elected to do, to appoint individuals to the boards and commissions that I see fit. I understand if there's some opposition, but ultimately I'd like it to be respected that that decision is mine and that I make that. We have three people who are appoint, who would like to be appointed to the DDA. I prioritize that the two business owners appointed, potentially to be appointed, will take the four-year terms and the other appointee, appointment would take the partial term. I liked, if I may say, Ms. Van Warmer's credentials. I liked her background. I think she would bring a great balance to the DDA. I don't think that a resident being on the DDA for a partial term is going to disrupt the DDA in any form or any fashion. I am asking, one, for council support to go with the decision that I, that is in, that is expected of me to make and I expect, and I would like for council to support that. So I'm supporting all the appointments. I think all of them will bring a great asset, great skill set to the board and the makeup will be, I think, something to see with Ms. Van Warmer's appointment, should that go through tonight. I think she'll bring a perspective to the board. I like hearing about the negotiations. I think that would have helped us probably earlier in the year. I like hearing about the communication aspect. I think that would be helpful because we can, I think the DDA board will probably agree that that was a, what we had to deal with earlier in the year was something that was hard to deal with. But we got through it. And I feel like based on hearing from a DDA board member that things are moving quite smoothly and that they now feel as if they're being heard and work can begin, get done. So to make a long story short, and I'm sorry that I had to go into that because I think that it's important for the community to know that that is part of my mayoral duty, to appoint individuals to the boards and commissions. And I, for one, think that I've done a pretty good job with that. I don't think that it should be questioned now based on how the boards and commissions are moving forward. So I am going to open this up to council because ultimately it is going to be a council decision to determine whether or not we are going to move forward with all three of these appointments to the DDA.
Through the chair, I would just like to say I respect your decision and I understand where you're coming from. This isn't personal. It's just what I feel is best for the DDA and what the board of the DDA feels is best for the DDA. And that if we move forward with all of these appointments tonight and we have the nine board members, only four of them will be Tiff business owners. And I think that is unbalanced, DDA. It's not about you, it's not about anything else. It's about what I think is right and I just want it to be on record, one way or the other, no matter how it goes.
But also, I just also want to stay, keep in mind that the government body, as far as my role and your role, also constitute individuals with a vested interest in the downtown. So it is still a majority of those who have the vested interest based on businesses.
The loophole is, just to be clear so everyone understands, is a resident would represent the Tiff district is a Tiff interest and myself as the council or the mayor also represents the Tiff district. So that's how we would have a majority of representation in the Tiff district. Not by the businesses, but by the resident and us.
Still open for council discussion.
Through the chair. So I spoke with you earlier today. I'm sorry, I can't remember her last name. Sarah?
Van Warmer.
Thank you. Ms. Van Warmer's application. Van Warmer.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. But I was saying, for application, Ms. Van Warmer's application. Didn't come with the packet originally and I didn't receive it until yesterday afternoon, at which time I really haven't had the time since then to review it. And I don't feel comfortable supporting a candidate for a position that, I haven't read the materials. I wouldn't hire someone I haven't read a resume on. I wouldn't sign a contract I haven't read. So I'm not opposed to considering Ms. Van Warmer's application. I would just like to do it at a date once I've had the chance to review it. And so that was my concern. So I, I wouldn't be supporting that application, but I'd be happy to support a, a motion for the other two candidates and revisit the third application at a future date.
Through the chair, I'll, I'll go next. I appreciate the context, I appreciate the conversation. Sarah, I am so sorry that this is a weird moment up here. You know, I, I thought about this and just to give some flavor to the audience here, the DDA was established in 1980. Its original purpose, as defined within our code, is to halt the property value deterioration and increase property tax valuation where possible in the business district of the city to eliminate the causes of that deterioration and to promote economic growth. It's a clear and specific mandate, right? The DDA bylaws adopted by the DDA board and the city of Ferndale echo the purpose. Promote economic growth, prevent and correct deterioration on behalf of business owners, property owners, residents and volunteers within downtown Ferndale. The district is focused on a defined geographic area. That's what the Tiff district is. It's right around the downtown in the corridor. It's not just a general advisory board. It exists to serve a targeted area of economic activity. Under Article 3, Section 2 of those bylaws, the board shall consist of not less than eight or more than 12 and at least a majority of the voting members shall be persons having an interest in property located in downtown Ferndale. Additionally, at least one of the voting members should be a resident of downtown Ferndale, which we do have, if the district has 100 or more persons residing within it. The language is very deliberate and ensures that the people making decisions about our Tiff district and about how we capture and spend hundreds of thousands of public funds, dollars, are predominantly people with a direct stake in the downtown's economic and fiscal success. Act 57 of 2018, which governs DDA statewide, reinforces it. Section 125 dot 4205 states that board members must be appointed so that a majority of the members shall be persons having an interest in property located in the downtown district. That's not advisory, that's statute. If we move forward with appointing another resident tonight on the back of appointing two residents prior, outside of the Tiff district and without a business or Tiff property interest, we risk violating both the intent and spirit of the DDA, even if we have a council member representing the Tiff district. This appointment would tilt the board towards a resident majority. People who, quite frankly, are not directly impacted by the taxes levied within the DDA boundaries. That's not equitable. If the goal is to shift the DDA to a more resident-driven organization, that's a bigger conversation. And frankly, if the DDA is no longer a business-focused entity, then maybe we've outgrown the model altogether. We could potentially talk about whether to bring DDA staff under the CED department and sunset the board rather than letting it morph into something it was never intended to be. But as long as we have a DDA and the power to direct Tiff dollars and shape the future of our business district, its board should be made up of stakeholders who are truly invested. Property owners, business owners and residents who live within the district. Anything else is a departure from the law and a disservice to the people who the DDA is supposed to serve. It's essentially a business board. Now, I will say this. Raylon, you make a really compelling argument. And I appreciate the, the context that you gave. And again, if, if we want to move forward with something like this, I just think it requires a bigger conversation about, is this, is the DDA the right place for, for this energy? Or are we, is, has it morphed into something that is no longer a business board? That is representing the business interests in the downtown?
I guess I'll go last. I, I think I, I don't like the situ, I don't, I don't like this. I, I don't like that we need to have, we have to have this conversation right now at the dais, on camera, with the resident in question. Like this is, this is a resident who's stepping up and, and I get it, she's, she's an adult and she can handle it, I know that. But, and I don't want to be paternalistic about it, but at the same time, like it's, this is just a very unfortunate situation that we find ourselves in. I'm, I'm very torn. I genuinely, this is, I'm not usually a person who's on the fence. I usually have a very strong opinion, one way or the other. And this one's just, this one's really got me. It's tough because I, you know, I definitely know what the DDA act says. I know what their rules say. I reviewed them as well this afternoon just to make sure I knew what was up and was up to speed. You know, so council member Kelly and Pro Tim Mikulski make very compelling cases. You know, mayor, you make a very compelling case. You know, I don't know. I genuinely don't know. I think I'm, I think for me, it's just, if we, if we were having this conversation without a person's name attached to it and this was, you know, it kind of deep, was a little depersonalized, this would be a much easier conversation to be having. But we're in the position that we're in. You know, I think if we ultimately decide, you know, not to move forward with this appointment, you know, I hope that Ms. Van Warmer is, you know, interested in continuing or would be interested in some other appointment or involvement with the city, that this wouldn't, you know, sour her on the experience of, of attempting to volunteer to serve the city. But, you know, one thing I'm curious about is, you know, as far as I know, we've always struggled to get businesses and Tiff businesses to actually participate in a meaningful way. And so, you know, while I'm not saying this is a thing that's going to fully determine my vote, it's, you know, we're presented with the situation where we have folks who are like, I want to totally do this. Whereas when we have these vacancies and we're struggling to fill them, I don't see, and, and I know a lot of the businesses that have opinions on these matters are not the businesses that are stepping up to serve on the board. They're having a lot of opinions. They don't mind texting, calling or emailing any of us, but they certainly don't step up when it's time to fill a seat on the board. They got a lot of opinions about who's on the board. I don't see them doing the work to be on the board. So that's the thing that's kind of given me pause in this is like, I get it. We want that seat to be for like a Tiff-interested party other than a council member, you know what I mean? But at the same time, like, do we have some long list of people who are being displaced by this appointment? Because they're like knocking down the door, trying to get on the board? I'm not seeing any evidence of that. No one's reaching out to say, I've not seen it. And, and I look to council member Kelly, because you are far more involved in DDA and business downtown matters than I am certainly, is, you know, does this in fact, let's set aside the DDA and Tiff interest thing because I do believe we do have enough Tiff interest with the council representation. But, you know, how interested are the other downtown businesses? Are we seeing a lot of interest? in serving on this Board?
So through the chair, we have been, prior to now, it has been the DDA Chair who has, or DDA Director, who has been looking to get businesses on Board. So they have been the ones that have been recruiting, and we're taking a bigger effort as a Board as a whole to recruit folks. So these appointments, though, were not recruited by the DDA Board. We did have a business that was interested in the downtown, which I was super excited about. She has a business in town as well as on Livernoy. But then upon further discussion, she was not available three months out of the year, and just a lot going on, right? So we had to pull that. Derek, I found him, reached out to him, and spoke with him, and set up a meeting with him and Jenny. And that's how we found him, because I was looking for a business in the TIF district. We do have some fillers out there right now. I suggested two weeks ago to table this and let us try to look for some more, so we weren't put in this situation. I made that suggestion to see if we can recruit some more TIF district businesses. But this moved forward, and we have not begun that recruitment process.
I just have one final, one final thing. So sorry. Do we know, so we're filling these seats. One of this would be, obviously, this is one of these is a partial term. When are the next, like, presumably, we have seats coming up every year or on some regular cycle. When are the next batch of seats? Let's set aside any potential, like--
Yeah, there's actually one right now, and that's totally in town. And he has not turned in his application yet, but that will be turned in this week. And he is going to be continuing in that role and taking a bigger leadership capacity as well if that should go through. And I couldn't tell you after that, Jenny might, actually--
I believe it's 2026.
Yeah, after that.
We have a couple of seats up in 20, next year. Can you confirm that, DDA Director?
Thank you, councilmembers, all of you, for your attention to this and the passion for downtown Ferndale and the work that we do through the DDA. Within PA 57, there is a clause that the appointments are supposed to be staggered for four-year terms, but so that no more than two is practicable, will expire in any given year. So right now, we are in the process, in a future agenda, you will see a proposed adjustment to the terms to kind of right-term those out. So the next known expirations will be in April of 2026. We will have two appointments that are coming up for renewal then. One of those is currently Libiba Kayum, who is a Ferndale resident, and the other is Matari Harris, who is the owner of Bags &amp; Beads, which is a business currently located in the TIF. And then thereafter, in the following year, there would be two more expirations. Those would expire at the same time and be up for renewal or reappointment, and so on. So it would be correctly in the near future expiring for two people every year.
And the two seats that are up, one, I know Tari. The other, I don't know her. She's just a resident representative. She's not like a business owner.
At-large resident.
At-large, got it, okay. And would it be, sorry, I'm now trying to like wangle my way into like, is there some kind of way to split the baby? So sorry. Now I'm the one dragging this out. I really apologize. Is it, would it be allowable, like, if that, if that at-large, resident-at-large seat came up, like, say we approve these appointments as they stand, and then the one in April came up, could we then use the time between now and then, or I guess it is only July, but whatever, the time between now and then, which I know is a long time, to continue to, sorry, I keep thinking we're later in the year than we are, to cultivate that business interest in serving in that seat? That seat could become a business seat? Like, is that possible, or is that just from a timing perspective?
Of course it's possible, right? Anything's possible. I think right now, you know, with just newly having these residents appointed, I would be much more comfortable in 2026 revisiting, having another resident on the Board, and seeing how it shakes out with the dynamics and the businesses in the area and how it's going. I would be much more comfortable with that, personally. But, yeah.
Well, we are up for a vote to determine. I'm sorry, I'm looking at something else here.
Should we make, how would we make a motion? Do each one individually, maybe?
You could do each individually, yes.
Okay. So I will make a motion to appoint Erin Cameron to the DDA Board?
Just through the chair, it's really to confirm the mayoral--
Confirm the mayoral appointment of Erin Cameron to the DDA Board.
Support.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Kelly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mikulski?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
I will also make a motion to support the Mayor's appointment of Derek Werenica?
Werenka.
Werenka.
The DDA Board?
The DDA Board.
Again, that's for a four-year term.
For a four-year term.
Support.
Kelly?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mikulski?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes. And we also need to vote on Sarah.
Postpone her table, which is--
That's your discretion. So postpone is ideally to a date certain.
Okay.
Table is not particular, no particular date that you intend to take it back up.
I would actually think that, I think we should vote on it now.
Through the chair, just to, Councilmember Polika did say he wished to review, I think, that particular one, that, because he had not had an opportunity to--
Well, then--
If it's being presented, if it's going to be withdrawn, then, but I mean, if it's going to be voted on today, I'm going to vote no, because I haven't had an opportunity to review the application.
Well, then we just need a motion either to postpone to a date certain to allow you for further review time, or we just need to call a vote for today.
Well, if you feel the need to review it, then I would say we postpone Sarah Van Warmer's application until the next council meeting, which is the second meeting in July.
Can the Mayor make a motion?
Asking for a motion for that.
So moved.
Roll call individual, please.
Give a second.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yes, Donnie.
Okay, gotcha. Polika?
Yes.
I did not second that.
Oh, I apologize. I thought you said--
He moved his fingers, but he didn't say anything. No, I sighed. I sighed.
Okay, so there's no second for the motion to postpone?
So that motion fails for lack of support.
I'll make a motion to, we can vote on it, right? I can make the motion, to approve the Mayor's appointment of Sarah Van Warmer for the partial DDA term.
So you're making the second?
No, she's making the first.
I'm making the motion. I'm just making the motion.
Now we need a second, yes.
I'll second, so we can vote.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Kelly?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Mikulski?
No.
Polika?
No.
Leaks May?
Yes.
That motion does not, that motion carries and--
No.
No, does not. The motion to appoint Sarah, to not appoint Sarah, has been approved.
The motion was to appoint, so it fails.
So it failed, okay, all right, all right. So I do have a comment to make after all of this. I just find when we have good people who want to join our boards and people are not breaking down the doors to join these boards and commissions, I'm very disappointed that we were, that we voted down a good person who has taken the time to learn through Fern and Learn, who would bring, I think, a great voice to the DDA Board without compromising the integrity of the DDA Board. I just, I don't see that as happening. I find that I'm disappointed that we voted that down. And equally disappointed, because in my job as Mayor, to appoint individuals to these boards, and these boards are running very well, I think, to have dismissed an appointment that I made is very disappointing to me. However, that's why this comes to council, and that is why it is voted on council. What I hope to, I hope for Ms. Van Warmer is that this does not dissuade you from still being involved in the volunteer, as far as volunteering for any sort of boards or commissions, because I think you're pretty great, and I hope you still stick around. And I'm sorry that you had to go through this.
And I echo those sentiments.
All right. I believe there is a discussion, a new, a discussion regarding--
Yes.
The Vester parking, discussion, agenda item 9A. If you'd like to take one and pass it down, there you go.
So this just is an open discussion item. Before we dedicate more staff time and resources, which we've already discussed tonight, are extremely limited at the moment, I wanted to get some council feedback on what, if any, options the city would like to pursue for trying to improve parking conditions on Vester. And I think it's worth noting, as we head into this conversation, it really needs to be framed around the context of what is our goal? Is it the city's goal to try and offset parking? Is it the city's goal to try and meet the needs of individual businesses? Is it some combination? And very simply put, what is the problem we're trying to solve for? So try to filter that question through the options, and I'll run through these very quickly. This is a stream of consciousness document. This is not a formal report. This is just all the notes that I've taken on the options that I've heard so far to date. So please, if it's lacking, that's what this is all about, let me know what we need to consider. So the first option that we have considered is the addition of more on-street parking. We did identify already, it's already implemented, the possibility for one to two additional spaces by closing in a curb cut, so no concerns there. That is moving forward just as part of the paving project. Additionally, there's about 125 feet of curb line that could be added if we decide to narrow the sidewalk on the south side of the street between the alley and 160 Vester Avenue. We anticipate this could create five to six additional spaces if that curb was added through the removal of the sidewalk. Right now, the sidewalk is about three flags wide. We could reduce it to our standard one-flag width and have parking that mirrors very similarly what is right next to the Elks now. This does have a pretty sizable cost to it, about $50,000 for the curb and base, pour concrete, and then up to $25,000 more for drainage, if that's needed. Ultimately, Director Jameson felt like it'd probably be about a $60,000 project. What we'd be looking at, though, is a return on investment of three to five years, because each of those spots generates just over $3,000 a year in revenue. It's also about a middle-of-the-road timeline, eight to 12 weeks, depending on when we could get a contractor in. Generally viewed as positive to all stakeholders. The challenge here, obviously, is that it's not a budgeted expense, so we would need to look at whether or not it made sense to either delay one capital project within the parking fund or simply use funds from reserves to make that possible. And then there's also the question of whether or not we want to narrow a sidewalk that is currently widened to accommodate more parking. The second option we looked at is piloting non-delineated parking spaces. So instead of measuring off and adding those kind of corner joints to each parking space, just having an open parking area. The challenge here is that it's very dependent on the individual actions of drivers. There's no guarantee that it would create an additional parking space, depending on how people position themselves within the system. It's, within the parking community, it appears highly debatable whether marked or unmarked spaces are more efficient. Third, we just looked at improved signage. Now, this would be outside of what the DDA is already proposing, which is a broader wayfinding assessment in this current fiscal year. We more immediately identified the opportunity to add signage on Vester at Bermuda and Nine Mile. And then also, it appears that the developers for 141 Vester have indicated that they're willing to put some messaging on the windscreen of their footprint fencing, which would allow us to maybe do a more highlighted focus on the location of other parking lots within the area. Just doing some dedicated signage on Vester and that Nine Mile and Bermuda spot, we believe could help with the utilization of the city hall parking lot, which we found even at peak hours only has a max of 80% utilization. So at any given time, even during peak hours, there's 16 to 17 spaces that are going completely unused there. Also a very low-cost option. Fourth, we looked at allowing on-street reserved parking spaces. So this was born from a direct request of a local business. They're asking for two on-street parking spaces directly adjacent to their part, to their property, that they can manage for private parking or private valet services. The city does have a precedent of allowing for private use of spaces. The kind of kicker here is that the business is asking that these be provided at no cost. In our past agreements, we have assigned a cost to those long-term rentals. We've also generally seen that those rentals occur either on a short-term basis or when they're on a long-term basis, there's some very concrete delineation around their being taken out of the public parking system, such as additional features being placed on them or long-term fencing in place. We don't have a lot of experience with, I would say, non-permanent barriers to long-term parking being blocked off. Not insurmountable, certainly just a challenge that needs to be answered. Other challenges that were identified with that particular request, one, it is a net revenue loss for the city. The two spaces are estimated to generate just over $6,000 a year. There's also the concern that it's not a net positive to the general parking system, because it takes more parking out of the public parking realm, but it does directly benefit a highly impacted business. So there's a trade-off to consider there. Additional challenges, the public right-of-way is technically for use that is in the public interest, so I would have to defer to legal for an opinion on whether it was even feasible or advisable to allow long-term use for public purposes, particularly if that public, or for that private purpose, particularly if that purpose was without consideration, which is to say, without any payment, which I believe the attorney shaking his head presents some challenges. There's also the issue just of general regulations, enforcement, maintenance of the roadway. Again, if there's not a permanent solution to blocking that off, and it needs to still be open for ingress and egress, how that works. Again, I wouldn't call anything impossible, other than if, you know, we have a legal opinion that says we can't do it, but these do need to be weighed if that is our goal. Let's see. And then, of course, last but not least, there is the perception of how we qualify, why those spaces would be exempt from payment when other spaces in our system require payment. I believe that presents a liability to the city that would be very difficult to overcome. Certainly, if this was like a paid transaction, it's a little bit easier to structure it in the way that we have in the past. But if it needs to be an unpaid situation, it opens the door either for us to start allowing broader private use of spaces at no cost, or to potential liability from the individuals who are currently paying for private use of those spaces. Next, we considered valet services. The valet services, the challenge here is the cost. At the end of the day, it's going to be about $1,500 to $2,500 a week to run a valet service, and that would be Thursday through Saturday, so just peak hours, 5:00 PM to midnight. The direct-- The direct cost associated with that is because valet service providers want a fixed rate. They're not looking to make money off of the individual cars that park, so the onus is on us to achieve a certain number, or to achieve a certain volume of parkers. The other side of that coin is, we also lose revenue in our system, because we don't have somewhere to park vehicles that aren't our existing paid hourly spaces. So in addition to the 90,000, roughly $90,000 a year cost to operate the valet services, there is about 40 to 60,000 in lost revenue from the spaces, and that's estimating 64 spaces would be needed at any given time. That is considerable. So $130,000 to $150,000 in total cost. We could certainly do a deeper dive, and I would probably recommend we do a deeper dive on like what the, you know, kind of break-even point could look like in that situation, but the, that approach becomes feasible, really, if we can find alternative locations for parking. So that's something we will be doing as well, or if, if that's something council's interested in, we would do as well, is look to see if there are existing venues, like Credit Union One, who might be willing to let us stage vehicles there, but not open it up for public parking. That would eliminate the entire cost that's lost from our hourly not being used. And, you know, the other, I think, consideration just here is, you know, where to stage it, how to frame it, but those are all questions we could work through if valet services seemed of interest. And then last, this is an idea, I think, that had been floated around sometime in the past, but just popped back up again during conversations, which is limiting long-term parking spaces. So presently, they are long-term parking spaces, so non-hourly spaces in Lot 15 and Como's Lot. The Como's Lot has near 100% utilization. The Lot 15 has lower utilization. We could consider, if the priority were to be on having more customer-focused parking, relocating those long-term parking spots to the City Hall Lot. This is a net neutral on the parking system as a whole, it doesn't really create new spots, but it does allow for more turnover at spaces that are nearer to the businesses. Obviously, the trade-off there is the employees lose access to parking spaces that are closer to their place of work, they have to walk longer, and I would suggest if we, if we do move that, down that path, that the city identify whether it has suitable lighting or if any lighting upgrades are needed along Nine Mile and in the City Hall parking lot as a result. So that is, again, that is a very, very high-level view of the options that are out there. I would love feedback, are any of these off the table? Dive deeper on? Your opinions are welcome. Well, first of all, thank you for coming up with these options. I know it's been a long topic of discussion over the last couple of years, really, but I'm glad that, to see that we are trying to find ways to support the businesses in the area, employees in the area, et cetera. I open it up to council for discussion regarding these options for Vester Avenue.
Through the chair. I feel like all of these, with the exception of one, seem like they're worthy of further investigation. The one that I don't love is the pilot non-delineated parking spaces. It just seems like we probably wouldn't get much of a benefit from that. With the valet, I think, again, finding that alternative location for parking is going to be critical. And the, the limit long-term parking spaces, you know, earlier, we heard from an audience member about the DDA getting, I think it was Uber codes for employees, and how that worked really well to get the employees out of those lots and get them somewhere else. So that could be a, another potential portion of this to, to handle employee utilization besides just limiting the long-term parking near the businesses. Overall, great job. I love the train of thought. It's, it's a lot. And, and I'm glad that we're thinking and talking about some additional steps that we can bring a, a critical time period in that area.
Through the chair. I concur with Mayor Protam McColsky's suggestions, and, and I agree with the non-delineated parking space. One thing that I thought about the additional on-street parking is, and this is going to go even a bit further, but maybe the consideration of turning that block of Vester one-way coming off of Woodward. And that way, you could actually keep the street kind of narrow, because now you're only dealing with one direction of traffic, and you'll actually be able to maybe make the sidewalks a little bigger, because that's part of our downtown. It's, it's, it's a walkable part, and I hate to think that we're going to end up narrowing the sidewalk, as opposed to allowing more space for people to walk. That would be my suggestion. You lose, I mean, right now, if you go down Vester, the, the businesses closest to Bermuda, they have that on-property parking, and the back ends of those vehicles are hanging over the sidewalks all the time. So I, I just think that that would be something that we could investigate, just turning it into one-way. And I think coming off of Woodward would be the better alternative to control traffic, because they can go into the alleys, or go forward to Bermuda and go, you know, right or left. I think you're limited if you go one-way onto Woodward.
So eastbound traffic, one-way?
Eastbound, one-way, yeah.
Through the chair. I love that suggestion, because I don't love the suggestion of narrowing the sidewalk. I think it's kind of anathema to what we've tried, we're trying to create for Dale. It feels like very much the opposite direction we're trying to go of, you know, we want a walkable, especially business districts and commercial corridors. So to me, I just really do not love the idea, and, and Councilmember Pollock is right, like, when I wa, I walk along there quite a bit myself, and cars are already hanging off of those parking spaces on the back of some of those businesses, so narrowing that sidewalk just, to me, does not feel like, that's not the move. Love the idea of one-way, I'd love to, I'd love for us to get a traffic study started, like, tomorrow, and really kind of get grinding on that, because it's going to take, it's going to take time, right? This is a, this is a, you know, a business district that's coming off of a major trunk line, so the traffic study's going to take more than like five days, so we should just get it started, take a look at what that means. But, you know, it's, this is a great, great list of suggestions. I will say, I personally am, I don't love the idea of the valet. I think it's the kind of thing that sounds super cool and good in theory, and I think that it ultimately ends up not quite being used to the, to the level where we're paying a lot of money and not enough people are utilizing it, and then ultimately, we get hammered for blowing a lot of money on something that didn't get utilized. So my wor, that's my worry with the valet, is I just don't know, plus, as Protam McColsky noted, like, finding that parking, like, where do these cars go? Well, we already can't find parking ourselves, how are we going to find parking for this solution?
The only opportunity would be Credit Union One, and they refuse to work with us.
They're not, yeah.
Don't seem to want to work with us at all, so.
So my question, additional item, would be, you know, I think, you know, Mindy had two really great ideas. One, I would like to learn more about the Uber codes and things that folks have done, at least for like construction-period windows, not like as a permanent solution to, to parking issues i, in commercial quarters, but while construction is happening, while things are particularly acute, is there a solution there? And I, you know, she really noted what I have also been asking, which branches off of the Credit Union One question, which is, we have a lot of businesses that aren't evening businesses, they are post-five, they, they close at five or six, right? They're, they're normal standard business hours, and then they've got these lots that are maybe only a couple blocks away, they're considerably closer. I get it, there's liability stuff, we're going to have to work out, I get it, I'm not, you know, not unaware of that, I'm eyes-open on that, but I think it's worth the conversation. I think it's worth reaching out to some of these businesses, saying, hey, you've got a parking lot that is, you know, empty after 6:00 PM, for the most part. Can we talk about how we utilize that? Because can we get people parked immediately next door to these businesses? No, probably not, it's, that's one narrow street. But can we get them one or two blocks away? Hey, like, that's better than across town, right? Like, it's closer than City Hall, which is great, like, I don't mind walking from City Hall, but I can think of folks for whom that might be very difficult or challenging. And so, you know, I really would love us to reach out to some of these businesses and have that conversation. You know, there's the big lot behind the mattress store right there on Camborn. I know there's the lot behind the Jersey Mike's and the, I think there's like a smoothie place or something, a smoothie cafe. So they've all got kind of these big lots behind them. Some of them are evening businesses, but some of them are not, and there might be a way for us to work out, hey, could we work out some kind of arrangement or even a rental agreement for that?
Yeah, I will, I will note that it was put on my radar that possibly even just working with the courts and Otis Supply, which is vacant now and bank-owned, to see if that would be a potential staging spot, is something that is on our to-do list if we're going to pursue a deeper dive on valet.
Hmm, okay. That's a great question, actually, the, the parking lot for the court. How is that treat, that's not public parking.
It's not public parking, no.
After hours.
No.
No, I didn't think so. Hard, I couldn't think of it.
Is there some sort of sharing with, the comedy for that at all? Uh, I, I feel like.
People definitely are.
Yeah, I believe, I've, I've seen people parked there.
Okay.
Either that or because there's no signage and not being enforced, people are just parking there, but.
Where there's a will, there's a way. When you're looking for parking, you're like, I'll run the risk of a, of a parking ticket. But I, I think it's worth having a conversation with the court administrator and saying, is there some, because there might be a state rule, right? It might say like courts can't have their lot, who knows? I don't know, Dan would probably know better than I do, but I, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the things that's on our list. If, if I could, recognizing the limits of staff capacity, if maybe you all could articulate your top one or two priorities, so I could move those to the top of the list for our attention, that would be very helpful.
Well, quickly, so I made the recommendation about the Vester Street one-way and, and doing that parking there, but I guess my question is, how much is that really going to benefit while the project is under construction?
So that would probably generate roughly the same amount of spaces as eliminating the sidewalk, because that was all we could identify as a suitable run of curb. Otherwise, you have drive approaches that hold length for the auto repair shop.
I understand, I guess my question was, construction's going to be happening, how much of that is going to be impacted by us trying to create more parking on that road? I mean, we're going to try to create it, but is it actually going to be utilized because of the fact that there's doing?
Yes, because it's on, if, if, whether we do one-way or we do additional curb line on the south side, it could be used during construction, because it's on the south side of the street, not the north side of the street. We will lose parking spaces to the construction.
Yeah.
So this would really just offset the spaces that we're losing in the meantime. We could also consider looking at a temporary one-way just during construction, specifically to offset those, which would be less costly for us in the long run, but, you know, then you got to put up temporary signage that needs to last the next 18 to 24 months, so it's.
Well, and I don't think you're going to have, well, you won't have an issue, anybody coming off of Woodward, because they're going to be going in the direction we want them to. It's going to be your issue of people coming off of Bermuda wanting to turn onto Vester.
Yeah.
And does that, then, are people going to be forced to go left or right, or go east onto Vester further, thereby creating more traffic on the residential part of Vester? That would be my concern.
I, I think if you were putting it up as a temporary solution, I would frame it as a detour, and to encourage people to go to Nine Mile so that they can make the loop.
That's what I would hope, too, yeah.
Through the chair. I think, I love the idea of the one-way, I think that's great. Yep, and I think the low-hanging fruit is improving the signage to City Hall, I mean, I think that's something we could do immediately, right? It's just so simple.
Very low-hanging fruit.
You know? And I am interested in looking into the valet temporarily, I think that's a really great solution. I think it could be even something shared between the DDA and the council in costs. We've discussed it at the DDA, and it's something I think that we're open to discussing, but I think that would be a great temporary, temporary fix, yeah.
There's cost-sharing involved, I, now I'm interested.
Hey.
Now I'm interested.
Well, I can't speak for everyone, but I know it is definitely something we've talked about. I mean, we need a solution there.
Yeah, I agree, I think the, the low-hanging fruit, the signage, I mean, yeah, let's, let's spend a few hundred bucks, improve wayfinding, and, you know, maybe even put out a few, you know, maybe, you know, Riley could do a few social media pushes that just sort of says like, hey, if you're looking for parking solutions, like, here, you know, I know a lot of Ferndaleans know that, but also, remember, it's not just Ferndaleans trying to park. We got a, our, our nighttime business is really not predominantly Ferndaleans, it's really visitors to Ferndale. And so, you know, just getting that out into the world, I get it, not everyone follows the Ferndale City Facebook page, but it's what we've got right now, and kind of getting that out there and saying, hey, here's some possible parking solutions, putting on the parking webpage that just says, hey, you looking to park in Ferndale, or are you looking to go here? Here are some options that, off the beaten path, or maybe you didn't realize, this lot is actually open and available for parking. I know, I often go, when I'm visiting a city or something, I will go to their parking department website and find out, like, what do I need to know, and is there something I should, oh, there's a garage on this corner that has a lower price, cool, I'm going to, like, I want to go, you know, and also, I'm a dork.
I do the exact same thing, Donnie, so it's just funny.
Yeah, it's, yeah. So, yeah, I think, you know, that, that's, that kind of, I think, goes under the signage thing, it's kind of part of like wayfinding.
Yeah, we say improve signage slash messaging.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, well, Jenny just brought to my attention the 141 Vester being willing to put messaging on their fencing, so we can learn more about what that looks like, and if, if that could include a graphic, or, you know, if it's just simple text messaging, but.
Like a map.
Yeah, exactly, if we could place a map of all the other locations, that would be ideal. So far, I have, kind of top of the list is improved signage and messaging, then exploring one-way street, either temporarily or permanently, and then third is valet services. Does that seem accurate?
And I really would advocate, I know it's not on your, your list here, but I really would continue, want us to continue conversations with neighboring owners of lots of varying kinds, like, I mean, it just, the worst that happens is they say, no, I'm not interested in doing that.
Well, I think that'll happen naturally as part of looking at valet services, because there's, it's really challenging for us to justify valet services if we don't have somewhere to put those vehicles, if it takes more out of our inventory.
Right.
And would it be worth it even to ask the schools? I mean, well, I mean, I don't know, sometimes there's a lot going on in the evenings in that big parking lot, so. I know we utilized it for some of the festivals that we've had in the past, parking was through there, but, well, it's an option, so. What, I guess, where does this sentiment fall on allowing private businesses to have on-street reserved spaces at no cost?
So through the chair, I, I would just ask, because you've, you've added so many good points to that. There was a business that was doing it, and I can't remember who it was, I want to say maybe it was Asagi, which is now Coer, I don't know how to say it. They had, they had valet services out in front for a number of years, and so did the place that is now Corner Bar, I think it was, it wasn't La Dolce Vita, it was something similar to that. They also had valet services there, so they were using city parking spaces and had valet services dedicated in a city parking space. I don't know how they did it, I don't know what construct we used for it. If we could figure that out, then I am more in support of allowing on-street reserved parking spaces, just need to understand how to do it.
The comments I'm receiving is that it was likely paid, paid at that time, and that's why, and absolutely, I mean, if we, we have a precedent for that, we allow it, if the business was interested in reserving spaces long-term and paying the fee, that eliminates a lot of the concern, not all of these, obviously, concerns, but that's a, that's a big hurdle to, to jump.
Would have to be, for me, it would need to be paid, I don't think it would be fair to give.
Oh, yes, we have, we have, it's actually one of our ordinances.
Ah, okay.
So, it's, yes, they'd have to pay for that. See? Why are we paying the big bucks, guys? Why are we paying the big bucks, guys?
I, I guess in that instance, I wouldn't mind, because it's almost like the city providing it, but doing the work. But if a couple of businesses wanted to go in on it together that were close by, I wouldn't mind. But I don't want four businesses in two blocks blocking off spaces for their own individual valet service.
And that's, that's a very fair point. I, I think it would be a different conversation if this was valet services run by the businesses for multiple businesses. But yeah, having many individual valet services or individual assigned spaces becomes challenging for us. And there's still the issue of where they're parking those valeted cars, because that's not been solved either.
Well, I know with Asagi, when they were doing it, they were parking the cars in Ferndale Foods. Their agreement was with Ferndale Foods. That's a hike for those valet people.
Yeah, it's a real sprint, and you gotta wait for a cross.
Yeah, coming from Asagi.
But it would be for.
Well, yeah.
Send me that code.
And I guess maybe my, my other point with the, the reserved spaces. If there's any relief, and again, maybe cost sharing, that the DDA could do or vote on for a short time period, knowing that there's pain within the district for certain businesses affected by the construction, maybe that's something that could be explored, so that it doesn't all fully fall on the business owners that are already unduly impacted by the construction.
Well, and that's, that's a fair question, as is, you know, do we pilot some of these solutions? So we could easily roll out, assuming we figure out the logistics of it, a valet service, you know, for, for weeks to see how it works. You know, on a short-term basis, or possibly something we should only do during, you know, certain seasons of the year or during, you know, high-volume, you know, periods of time. But that's, that's all I'm looking for at this point, is to figure out where I should be asking those questions and putting more research into these things. So that we're not spinning our wheels on six or seven different options and kind of focusing on two or three things that we can really bring to fruition.
I did just learn Asagi parked at the funeral home on nine mile.
Oh.
My partner Jess texted me that. I don't know how she knew it, but that's impressive.
Well, it's still far down there.
Yeah.
I thought it was the Ferndale Foods, but it had been both.
Ferndale Foods is an appealing option because they have a very large.
Yeah.
Lot that is vacant for a good chunk of the evening.
Well, and they already do agreements with a number of businesses, like the doctor's office across the street. They have reserved spaces.
Okay, well, at this point then, my direction is definitely hit hard the improved signage and messaging. Do more research on the one-way street and valet services. We're probably at this point putting on hold anything regarding additional on-street reserved spaces until we have a better understanding of our valet options. And there did not appear to be any interest in piloting non-delineated spaces. Long-term parking spaces are probably still on our radar, but not high priority. Am I assessing that right? Okay.
And I want to add a little, one, just one little nuance to my.
You gotta get the last word on everything.
Parking, oh, sorry.
Actually, the mayor does.
Parking lot question is, I want to look at the parking lot question not just for.
Valet.
Valet and not just for the short term. I mean, again, these are large unused spaces every evening. As a, you know, as this sort of district grows and develops and we want to build this as another commercial district corridor, we need to make sure we're taking into account that parking need.
Sure.
For better or worse, so if we work out a long-term agreement that says, hey.
Use it for any form of parking.
Yeah.
Valet or otherwise.
So it's interesting that you bring that up. The, and this, this happened years before I ever even got involved with Ferndale. I think this goes back to the nineties. The row of parking right behind Boogie Fever, there's about maybe ten or twelve spaces. That property is actually owned by Boogie Fever. But they leased the property to the city and we manage it as part of our parking system. And I think maybe two or three spaces are reserved just for Boogie Fever out of those. But we manage it. We're responsible for paving it, for keeping it clean, but we also collect the parking revenue. So in, in regards to what you're talking about, that might be an option for some of these lots that, you know, maybe we make an agreement. We keep up their lot, we get the revenue and we pay them a fee that covers their taxes and they have, actually have a place where their employees can still park for dedicated spots, you know? And I'm thinking like Anita, Anna's uniforms. Yeah, that parking, that parking lot's never had any cars in it.
I, I think that these are great jumping off points, and if, that's what I was looking for, is for you guys to tell us where you want our focus to be. So we can, we can put the team together and make that happen.
I'm glad we've got some options, some good ones. Because I've never seen a discussion on our agenda before.
That's, that's it.
Where do we go from there?
That's it. We just move on to the next.
All right. Okay, all right. So then I guess now what we're coming up is called a council, and I'm going to turn it over to the city manager for department head updates.
Sure, just before I kick it off to department heads, I want to quickly address a couple of the public comments that we got earlier tonight. One, just making sure that the record is clear, we, we did articulate that there would be costs associated with managing Ferndale Market Days. That information was detailed in the council agenda item, so. I know the public perception related to how the city hosts events is that it doesn't charge itself similar costs, but there are costs associated with city services and those events. Now, we acknowledge this when we approved that agenda and I, item, and I think when we talked about the, the guidelines generally, a better job needs to be done of how we close out those events and report on the actual post-event revenues, which is something I anticipate we'll see now with Market Days when we do it and Dream Cruises this year. So we will, we will get far more transparent about what those dollars actually are. But if you're just reading the city's budget, it's, it's understandably very confusing. We pair together a lot of small special events with the Dream Cruises, with some staff time that's not actually tied to how much time that person spends on those things and call that a department budget. So just looking at the department budget for special events slash Dream Cruises isn't actually reflective of the Dream Cruises' net revenues or losses. Again, we'll, we'll do a better job of that this year articulating. And then unfortunately, the, the resident left, but I wanted to apologize if we missed a call or I missed a call from a resident last week. We did have extremely high call volumes last week, so it was a bit of an, an anomaly. But we try to be very responsive. As we talked about tonight, it's, it's a goal of the city to be as responsive as possible to our resident communications. But I guess just for the public, the issue with West End was that our construction crews identified a sinkhole that was near a Oakland County sewer manhole. So we had to pause work for them to come in and make the repair. And that was what the delay was, to give them time to safely make that repair and effectively make that repair. But the paving should be completed within the next two weeks now. It's back on track. The, the work is done. Now I will kick it over to comms.
Hello, good evening again. I'm here tonight to talk about the quarterly print newsletter with Dexter the Bunny, who I met at Ferndale Pride. So this is our summer edition for July, April, July, August, and September. Quite a bit of stuff here. We have everything from Public Works with yardways, street sweeping, rainwater and flooding, sustainability. We have the Tree of Heaven, Councilman Pollock's request and Logan's. The Residential Compost Program, all the parks, sports, events, et cetera. We have the BSNA portal, police summer involvement, fire, summer safety, property reminders, zone parking events, and a lot more. And the Pollinator Parade is on the back as well. So these were sent to mailboxes, I believe, a couple days ago. They are here at City Hall, they are at the library, they will be at Incubizo shortly. And they're at ferndalemmy.gov/newsletters to read online and click all the links. And I do want to thank you all for the kind words. I really appreciate that. And if you need any assistance, like to help navigate, please reach out to me. I'm happy to talk through anything, answer any questions. And I'll work with Colleen James to kind of develop on the plan. So thank you so much.
Arcs.
Hello again. Just going over some information that is included in the newsletter. This Thursday, Parks and Rec will be hosting its Park at Night, where we, we will be hosting a movie for the public. It is free for all comers. The long games and activities will start at 6:00 PM. At 6:30, we will have live music from artist Kevin Wilson. And then at 8:15, the movie will begin. We are going to be showing Moana Two for this particular viewing. Again, that is this Thursday, starting at 6 o'clock at Harding Park. Then on Thursday, August 14th, at Martin Row Park, we will be having our movie on the hill, at which we will be playing Jurassic World Part One. The movie there will begin at sundown, but long games and activities will begin at 8:00 PM there. That is Thursday, August 14th, at Martin Row Park. And then our upcoming Fall Festival, which is the biggest event that we do each year, that will be taking place on, on October 4th. We are currently soliciting sponsorships for various different sponsorship levels. We have a bevy of different activities that we do for this event that includes hayrides, pony rides, carnival games, rock climbing walls, and other things like obstacle courses and stuff like that. And each of those carry the possibility of having a sponsor. So we would encourage any businesses that are out there that are looking to connect to the community or come out and have a good time with the community, contact the Parks and Recreation Department for information about our various sponsorship levels. That is it.
Emmanuel, could you send the information about sponsorship levels and things like that to us, to the council?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we can kind of communicate that, or if people ask, what can I do, we can say, hey, this is what we do and here's the way you can do it, and then upsell them.
Sounds good.
You know, you could do a thousand bucks and think all the things we could do on this. Yeah, that'd be great for us to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Finance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give a quick update about what, where we are with our tax bills. Immediately, they have been late, and so tax bills were available online July 1st. And so they were available online and in person. We had some hiccups in print production. This has been the Murphy's Law of Tax Seasons. And so as of today, all of, all of the corrections and tweaks have been made. And the remaining tax bills have been sent off to the printer. They should hit mailboxes by this weekend, hopefully before that. What happened was, we worked with a new template with Oakland County this year, and we had to send these things off to Comerica to be tested because there are OCR lines that have to be scanned. The scanning was, first time was a quarter inch too far to the left. I moved it and then it was still about a half of inch too far to the, to the left. So I just moved it to the middle of the page, and so I sent that back out, and so that's been done. The escrow bills did hit the mail last week, and we started receiving payments from mortgage companies towards the end of last week. And so a lot of residents have been calling about their escrow bills, and so those bills have been coming through. Because again, those bills hit the bill last week. And the residential bills, which are the non-mortgage bills, will be hitting the mail hopefully before Friday.
And I, I just want to add to that, for residents who are looking to see if you paid your bill online, it does typically take us one to two business days to process that, so, you know, please be patient. You will see it hit. It's just the system doesn't show it immediately as paid, even if you pay online.
Right. Through the chair, what about people who don't pay online, usually mail it in, but they use the coupons? How are they going to know what their amount is going to be?
Well, some people have been calling in because usually the bills hit early to mid-June. And so those people have been calling in, so we can email or mail out those installment coupons because we can print them out for any parcel in the city.
Okay, I'm going to give you an address to mail out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Through the chair, one, one additional question. Is there, is there any other proactive communication that we can do to get to those folks who just don't access the, the internet? They're not going to be on BSA, they're not going to be on social media. It sounds like we've got a number of people that clearly we know that they escrow. The, the other folks, is there, is there anything else that we can do? Is there any way that we? I don't know, I, I realize it's an insurmountable task as I'm saying it, but is there any way we could call them and let them know? I don't know, just trying to find anything that can provide them some relief. And also, do we have a plan in place? I know that the due date is immutable. We can't move that. But can we waive the, the late fees if they, if, if they miss the, the due date?
So that is a, a question that I had posited to legal. There are some challenges. I can say inside the BSNA software, we can backdate payments. But it, that really, I, I need a, a legal opinion on whether that's permissible for us to do.
Lastly, in other news, our 2016 unlimited tax obligation bond will be redeemed tomorrow. So that will be off our books.
Awesome.
Awesome.
So one question I would like, it's not really to you, Phil, sorry. You don't have to say it at the podium. I would like, so we, we can change the due date of our property taxes. We can't change the due date of these property taxes.
Yes.
They've already, the levy is already done. But we will be, I will be introducing a change for this body to set a new due date for property taxes in the city of Ferndale. Our July 31st date is very unusually short, and so.
I will note, they may, James and I were having a discussion earlier today, and it may be driven by the fact that we offer the eight-month installment coupon. So that's something to consider. I, we're not, I, I don't believe with my knowledge of BSNA, we're going to be able to like make a choose-your-own-payment-plan system. So if we change the eight-month installment system to increase the due date, that just might mean we have to do a seven, you know, installment plan or something like that. I just want to put that on your radar, that there's a little bit more of a moving target to it than just changing the day.
So I would be curious and I would like if we could look into, and I will be, I am already doing the same, what other cities, what other jurisdictions do, because again, we are, we are very unusual in having a July 3rd. It's extraordinarily unusual. You know, Detroit is August 15th, most cities are September 1st. That is the, like, the most common due date for property taxes. Surely these other cities also have payment programs, so I want to see how they, how they're making that work. And they must be much fewer payments, right? Like, it must be a much smaller installment.
I don't know how, how common the payment system plan is. It's, it's not something I've seen a lot in local government. But, but that's, just for your guys' knowledge, James started the, the group Shared Document today. We are tracking all of the different concern types that we're hearing. So everything from the payment date to the coupon plans, to how payments are being processed, like why people can't see receipts immediately. And we're going to do an after-action report on this whole incident. Anybody else? Next up, I just want to make sure there's no other, no other comments from council on that. Next up is Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just some updates. Water Main Construction is wrapping up here. Group Four for the Streets is being paved this week. Hilton Road is under construction, and I heavily advise avoid that area if you can. It's pretty tight there. The sewer lining program, we began the 33-inch sewer segment between East Woodland and East Maplehurst. They did the middle section today. They'll be cutting out. They'll be cutting out the individual laterals a little bit later. That's all I got. That should wrap up by the end of this week, the other two segments.
Could you, on Nine Mile, there's a lot of activity going on on Nine Mile, right at the Hazel Park border?
Yes.
Could you give us a little information on that?
Yeah, so the section, it's the westbound on there is being redone, so there's a lot of base work that had to be done, and then they'll be filling that in. I don't have a timeline when that's going to be completed, but that's what's going on right there.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Clerk's Department.
Good evening. Just a final reminder, hopefully for the next two years, if you would like to run for mayor, city council, in your name to appear on the November ballot this election, please have your nominating petitions and affidavit of identity submitted to us by July 22nd at 4:00 PM. We do strongly, strongly encourage you to turn those in early. If there's a circumstance that arises that we need you to collect additional signatures or to recollect signatures, the July 22nd at 4:00 PM deadline still applies, so you could go collectors, collect additional signatures or recollect signatures. However, if you wait till the very last moment, unfortunately, that could potentially disqualify you from the ballot. And so, please, 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 just have those to us, again, at minimum July 22nd at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Special events.
Good evening. Just want to remind everybody that this weekend, on the 19th and 20th, is the Ferndale Market Days, from 11:00 to 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Saturday, July 19th, and 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday, July 20th. The event will take place in the library parking lot. And when I first reported, our goal was for 30 vendors to participate. We have 47. Our budget was for $8,500 in revenue, and we're at $10,700. Also want to let you know that our social media information, also, we have here where you can take a little sneak peek of all the participating vendors, and you will see the variety of what we have. We even highlighted as handcrafted products for everybody. So, hope that everybody's able to come out and enjoy the day, one or the other, or both. And the most important thing is that we ask for good weather. Thank you.
And last, DDA.
Hello again. Just a reminder, we kicked off our 909 concert series this past Sunday. Another great season to enjoy downtown Ferndale on Sunday afternoons with free music at Plant of On and Nine Mile. That will return again this Sunday, and so please come out and enjoy us and join us for a fun time in downtown Ferndale. Thank you.
That's it. All right. And I'm going to start to my right as Mayor Patton McCulkey.
I have nothing additional tonight.
All right, Councilmember Kelly.
I want to give a big shout-out to the DDA and Summer for our first 909 concert series. It was amazing. It went overtime for 40 minutes, because the band was not ready to be done, and nor were the residents. And even when it ended, we wanted more time. It was just so much fun, and it's really growing. And yeah, it's 4:00 on Sundays for the next eight Sundays, so don't miss out. It's going to be a lot of fun. I'm going to try to make it to everyone this year, so, excited.
And Councilmember Johnson?
Nothing for me.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. After a long period of reflection, I have decided that I will not campaign to retain my city council seat for the fourth term this November. This was not an easy decision for me to make. Having been involved in Ferndale politics for over 20 years, including the past 12 years on city council, it will be a major change to my world come January. There's a few reasons for my decision not to run again, but mostly, most notably is the change in my role and responsibilities with Ford Motor Company. Over the past several months, my position has transformed into a role that requires much more of my time, energy, and focus. As my fellow council members can attest, our responsibility in this role is far more involved than just coming to a couple of meetings each month and voting on things that we like. We spend anywhere from 10 to 20 hours a week communicating with staff, responding to calls and emails from residents, businesses, property owners, and helping them resolve any issues they might have. Attending boards and commissions for those that we're appointed to, reviewing those meeting documents and materials, doing research, and attending a variety of events and meetings outside the city where we are representing Ferndale. It would not be fair to the city and to the residents to serve another four years, knowing I could not fulfill all the duties and obligations required of the role of council member. And so, I believe it would be in the best interest of the city and my fellow council members that I not run for another term. That doesn't mean that I won't be involved in some manner. You can be sure that I will share my thoughts and my opinions on matters that are important to me, so, thank you.
All right. First of all, happy birthday, DDA. And I just want to say that I appreciate council's role. I mean, we are in a position where we can agree to disagree, and hopefully, we can always do that with respect towards our council members and towards one another. Councilmember Polica, I remember when you first came to my house, when you were campaigning, you came to my side door. I just want you to know how much I've learned from you and how much I've appreciated being a colleague of yours, best-to-be colleagues, over the, I don't know how many years. For me, it was, it might have been eight at the time, well, no, now 10, now nine and a half, so...
When you were on school board.
And school board, too, so...
And over a dozen.
And I know that you will very much so be very vocal and involved, whether on social media or otherwise. I just want you to know, it's been a pleasure working with you, and we still are working together through the end of the year, so I'm happy about that. All right. With that being said... This meeting's adjourned at 10:21.